Good evening. Today is Monday, June 4th, 2018. This is the Gaberis County Board of Education, work session and public hearing. The public hearing will start after the work session and no earlier than 6:30 PM. I would like to welcome our SRO, Brian Hines from Northwest Middle School, and Deputy Holmes from AT Allen and Mary Frances Wall. Thank you both for being here. Board members, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda. We would like to move item three, reports, until after the consent agenda. So we'll cover those items first, then we'll go into the report by staff. Do I have a motion to approve with that modification?
I'm chairman, so move.
Okay, Dr. Kirk made the motion, Mr. Sheemaker seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, Mr. Harrison, sorry.
Mr. Harrison seconded.
Motion carries, 7-0, thank you. So we will go down to item 4.01, the budget amendments with Ms. Clutz.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We have three budget amendments for your review today. We'll start with the state. As you can see, these are fairly normal budget amendments we have this time of year. Additional funds for group homes, additional funds or replacement, reimbursement funds for the transportation of early college, reimbursement for substitutes, and at the bottom is some additional E-rate funds that come from the state. Are there questions on the state budget amendments?
Okay, everybody good?
We will go on to the federal. Most of these are small adjustments or reclasses. The first one is an allotment or a grant that we receive for child nutrition equipment. We get those occasionally. We're thrilled and excited about that. The others are minor reclass due to year-end transactions. Any questions on the federal budget amendments? Go on to our final budget amendment for today, in capital outlay. You'll see some items that you're familiar with. The first one is actually when DPI purchases buses on a lease for us, they send the payment down and then we record the transaction. Then you'll see that we recorded additional funds that the county was able to provide for the new Hickory Ridge Elementary School.
How many buses was that?
This is, I don't know right off the top of my head. There's a four-year lease, so if you multiply that times four and then divide it by about 100,000, you're probably going to be close, so.
So the lease cost is 100,000?
A bus cost about 100,000. So the lease is a four-year lease, there's very minimal interest, so, you know, four times four, 16, and then divide it by about 100,000, probably 16 buses, I would say. Be my best guess right now. So then again, we have the additional funds for Hickory Ridge Elementary. The next one is the mobile units. As we went through our budget process and the county participated, they identified and saw our needs and were able to fund that in advance of the year, which helps us tremendously. Also, the next two items, the HVAC systems at J.M. Frees and Mount Pleasant High School were on our budget list and they were able to fund that in advance also. Then there's the request for funds to convert J.M. Frees Middle to a traditional middle school, and that provides athletic fields and converting some office space to classroom space. And then you'll see the construction, the contingency that we spoke with you last month about. We asked the county for 860,000 in contingency here, that's recorded. And then the county was able to fund another budget request that we had as sitting through our budget process, handrails for Concord High School. Questions on any of those?
Okay, I have one question about the buses. That's a four-year lease. Do we then own the buses after that, or does DPI still hold the title to them?
No, we own them, and then DPI will then replace them too after they've met so many miles or years, so it's certainly a great situation for us.
Okay. Okay, board members, consent agenda?
It was 18 buses, thank you.
18?
18 buses.
Consent agenda, board?
Consent.
Consent, okay, thank you.
So they're a little less.
Yes, ma'am.
So they're a little less than 100,000 if it's 18 then, right?
They are, 85. I was thinking about when we talked in our budget committee about the activity buses, and they have the EC lifts on them, they're closer to 100,000. So the ones without the lifts, the regular yellow school buses, are a little less. I think she says 85.
That's what I was thinking, because I was about to say they've gone up 20,000. Because I thought they, last year, they were around 80,000. Okay, thank you.
But I gather the county is able to respond very quickly to the budget items that we did call out this year and knock out a big couple chunks of those larger requests.
It helps us tremendously, yes. You look, you know, $7 million in HVAC systems, $2 million in mobiles, you know, that's, it's a really big deal, and the timing of it is excellent.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next budget item, 4.02, the continuing budget resolution.
Okay, and so the budget is well underway and passed, I think, now, but we can't process everything in time for a June 30th and get you guys to approve that budget. So we need a budget resolution so that we can continue to operate as of July the 1st, and then I'll bring the budget to you and you'll pass it in the next fiscal year.
Okay, consent agenda?
Consent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kelly. And the next item, we have the policies for approval on second reading. So these are on consent, and we have had no communication from anyone. So any questions on policy 3530, citizenship and character education? Okay, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay, electronically stored information retention? Any questions, consent? 3640, 5130, student voted registration and preregistration?
Consent.
Consent? Student records?
Action.
I was waiting to see if you were going to catch us.
No, I wasn't.
And the fourth policy there is 5030, community use of facilities, consent?
A question on that, though. We've added something that says polling places on Election Day in accordance with that statute. And then you go down a little bit further as far as fees. Are we charging for that? Do we get a fee for that, or is that free?
Can you repeat that again, please? I'm sorry.
On the item, you added a number one under B that says polling places on Election Day in accordance with 163A-1046.
Yeah, we do not charge any fees for that.
Okay, so if you go down to that section D that says what we charge and don't charge for, is that consistent? Does it say what it's supposed to say, or it's not charged?
I think it refers there to, sentence right above, number one, "Fees shall be applied uniformly to all groups within a particular user category." So the election days are in their own categories, the way I read that. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'd probably defer to our attorney to make sure we're consistent, but I think...
So if we go down to D, do we have a category that says that? That's all?
We can check with Mr. Schwartz and bring it back to you.
Okay, well, I just, you know, make sure it's consistent.
Make sure it's consistent, and then you can look at that next week if you want.
Okay, so we want to put that one on action?
Yes.
Just to be sure?
And we've never charged for polling place activity?
No, sir. Okay. So Ms. Monroe, we have the first three are consent and the last two are action. Okay, and the last consent agenda possibility there is the board member training for Ms. Carpenter. The one we expect to come out of this year's budget, did you decide, Kelly, if it would be this year's or next year's for her training?
The one in particular that they issue, and then the one that she's, she'll need to ask for reimbursement for, would be next year. So both.
Well, both of those are in July.
But we're going to have to prepay the admission for you to go in July now.
And neither one of those needs to be paid now.
Okay.
Yeah, the SRA conference, that can be paid that day in July.
Okay.
All right, whichever, she can look at our budget, and if we have money left this year, handle it accordingly. Is that okay?
Okay. If it doesn't need to be paid in advance, then that's fine. We can do July.
Okay, yeah, because they told me I could pay it the day of the conference, which is in July, July the 8th.
Ms. Carpenter, there is one registration for the other conference?
Uh huh.
That will have to be paid in advance.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay, never mind.
So one before and one after.
Oh, okay.
And Madam Chair, it would be my honor to put it on consent for Ms. Carpenter to...
Thank you.
Are you willing to give us a summary?
To present us well for each one of these things?
Yeah, this one, this one is, the one they're referring to is Safe Schools, and this will be...
Yeah, let them know why we're...
And this will be a conference down, and this will be a state conference. It'll be people from all over the state at this one, and I will give a report when I get done.
So the one is an SRO conference, and the other one is a safety summit?
Yes, and the SRO is here in Gaberis County, so that's something local I'll speak right back. And the other one, as I mentioned, will be a state conference.
Okay, so we put that one on consent as well? Okay, now we will go back to item three, the reports, and for 3.01, the Beverly Hills study and recommendation. We'll have staff come up for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. Tonight, myself, Tim Louder, and Kelly Clutz will be presenting the study and recommendation for Beverly Hills Elementary School. I want to start with a timeline review, so we know why we are where we are today. November 2017, the Royal Oaks Boundary Committee recommended Scenario E, which consolidated Beverly Hills Elementary School with Royal Oaks Elementary in Wyancroft. The superintendent accepted Scenario E and recommended that to the Board of Education. In December of 2017, based on K-3 legislation and many unknown factors, the superintendent recommended to the board that we withdraw that recommendation for Royal Oaks Elementary School and delay it for a year. In February of 2018, the Board of Education approved a 10-year plan, which included a recommended consolidation of Beverly Hills Elementary School. And this past May, our District Realignment Committee began the redistricting process for elementary, middle, and high. Anytime a board considers the closure or consolidation of a facility or school, the statute requires the board consider primarily the welfare of students to be affected by the proposed closing or consolidation, and that the study should include, among other factors, geographic conditions, anticipated increases or decreases in school enrollment, the inconvenience or hardship that might result for pupils to be affected by such closing or consolidation, the cost of providing additional school facilities in the event of such closing or consolidation, and such other factors as the board shall consider remain. And those are the items that staff will be addressing for you tonight. The data points and information that staff used for our recommendation fall in three major buckets. The first one will be student impact. I will address those for you tonight. The second bucket is facility analysis, and Mr. Tim Louder will address those. And the final one is a financial impact, and Ms. Kelly Clutz will address those topics. Under student impact, for me, we'll be discussing the welfare of students. We'll talk about inconvenience and hardship to students and parents. We'll talk about course offerings and program choice options. We'll look at school enrollment over time and possible projections for the next 10 years. Transportation, specifically to safety and efficiency, realignment in conjunction with geographic conditions. So our first one is our welfare of our students. Gaberis County Schools, student welfare is our number-one priority. Providing adequate facilities for all of our students is extremely important. Alleviating the sharing of resources, especially in our smaller schools. Creating accessibilities for all students. If you look at this picture, you can see the sidewalk that goes down to the playground at Beverly Hills. Obviously, that's not ADA accessible, and that's just one of the many different situations at Beverly Hills where students do not have ADA access. And then creating a learning environment that's appropriate for elementary students in the 21st century, creating a learning space that all students and parents should want their kids in.
Can you elaborate on the leading, sharing of resources, sorry?
Sure. When we have smaller schools, it's much more difficult to allot a full-time technology facilitator or a full-time counselors in full-time different positions. So we share a lot of different positions at our smaller schools. And so sometimes our resources are then having to be shared because they don't have enough students in there to allot them a full position and/or sometimes, and Ms. Clutz can speak a little bit more to the financial side, but sometimes even financial resources are less. Because we allot money as well, based on ADM. Inconvenience and hardship. Throughout the past year, we've gotten feedback from the community as expressed during our public hearings, our school site meetings, direct communication via email, phone calls, just as the board has received those. What we've heard is that there's a great affection for the Beverly Hills Elementary School from that community. Families have a history with that school. They feel like moving this school or consolidating it would take away the neighborhood feel. They wouldn't be able to walk to and from school anymore. That commute times for students could possibly change, and that the transition from a small school to a larger school could be a concern for them. Course offerings and program choice options. There are no impacts to course offerings. They would be receiving the exact same thing they have currently. Student options for program choice will be provided at the following schools. The STEM would be provided at Wyancroft Elementary. Students that would choose IB would go to Irvin. Students that would want Fine Arx would go to Royal Oaks. Students will continue to have access to all program choice options. And our final school assignments will be determined by a realignment process for the 2019-2020 school year. So where all the students will go will be determined by that committee and this board. So school enrollment over time. This is a chart that shows our projected enrollment done by McKibben Demographics. This is a chart that shows the resident students. These are students that live in the Beverly Hills Boundary without magnet students included. Basically, this number, as you can see, you see the total across the bottom starting with 345. It fluctuates a little bit, but stays within 10 to 15 students for the next 10 years. Also, to be noted, Beverly Hills currently has approximately 47 students that reside or live in the Beverly Hills Boundary but choose to go to other schools. And so that number, as we would move through the next 10 years, would also have to be deducted if that were to stay consistent with students choosing to leave. Transportation, as it's related to safety and efficiency. When we talked to our Transportation Department, they said they would definitely have a safer bus parking and staging areas. Pants drop-off would be much less congested and would not interfere with the bus operations as much. School buses would not be subject to small loading and unloading spaces. Efficiency of the buses, it will fit within the tier bus plan and not affect that current schedule. Ride times would not change dramatically due to the relocation of students. And current Beverly Hills Elementary buses would be reassigned to the proposed attendance areas. No additional equipment or needs would be anticipated, given our current program choice system. Finally, realignment geographic conditions. The Board of Education has given the following criteria to the Realignment Committee as it relates to geographic conditions. As I stated before, we'll be realigning and looking at elementary, middle, and high boundaries altogether. And the criteria are close proximity. Students should be assigned to the school where they are closest to their homes, and maximizing bus deficiencies in transportation of students, making every effort to account for transportation. That means parent commutes, car riders, balancing bus and travel time and cost. All of this information can be found on our website. It is up-to-date and current, and will continue at the link that's provided in this PowerPoint. Just a moment, I'm going to ask Mr. Louder to step up and talk to the facility analysis.
Punch that, touch that. Okay, thank you. Under the feasibility analysis, we're going to cover a couple items. Several of these studies were done over the last few years. We're going to look at the feasibility cost analysis done by DPI, the Fanning Howey Study that was created in 2014. We'll look at repair costs versus renovation costs and replacement costs, and we're going to address the cost of repairs and renovations and how they relate to one another. We're also going to talk a little bit about the new construction cost and how it aligns with our five-year and 10-year plan. As far as our, these points will be covered within the project. I just talked about that, so I'll talk about this slide. I just told you that from the previous slide. But anyway, I'll start off with the feasibility study, the Fanning Howey Study. The Fanning Howey Study was, we realized in 2013-14 that we were way behind on our deferred maintenance within the system, and the board did a contract with Fanning Howey to come in and do a comprehensive study of all of our schools, well, not all of our schools. They did 31 of our schools at that time. Several schools were not done because they were already scheduled for replacement or already had another independent study going, or they were actually too new to the system to require an extensive study on deferred maintenance. However, they did 31 of those schools, and they set up a priority of what needed to be done within the system to replace things that were at or beyond their present life cycle. Several of them were, you know, well beyond their life cycle, some of them were very near the life cycle, so they gave us a five-year plan of that replacement of those components within the building. And they also talked about portions of our building that did not meet certain standards. We had to make some adjustments to those once we entered into the Fanning Howey Study to bring these up to some current standards. In some cases, you can't just go in and replace a component and not do some work to bring it up to code. So therefore, it did have kind of a mixed use of costs there. Anyway, putting all those items together, for Beverly Hills Elementary School was a total of $10,300,000, okay?
What does the VFA abbreviation mean?
The VFA software is a software that they had developed that allowed them to go in, and it was a tablet form that allowed them to go in and pick components.
That was their own software?
That was their own software, yes, sir.
And just to clarify, that $10,300,000 was in 2014 dollars?
Yes, sir, at that time, it was 2014, yes, sir. And I completely, that summary study is in Appendix E for you, should you need to see it. And repair costs, repair costs are a little different from the Fanning Howey. It is a basis of where we did our repair costs. Each year, our maintenance department goes through and looks at the total capital needs and begins with what needs to be replaced and what does not need to be replaced. Stuff like, you know, major components, water systems, HVAC, things like that, obviously ADA accessibility, that sort of thing. And on that list, between 2018, 2017 to 2020-24, we have a very comprehensive list of what was included in our budget request to the county for replacement and repairs needed at Beverly Hills Elementary School. Now, you understand that some of the things on the Fanning Howey Study have been taken care of, but then as, four years later, there's other things been added to the list. So this is our total value of $10,607,000. Example of some of those components are, just for example, the top picture there is a piece of piping that we removed from the distribution system going in to Beverly Hills Elementary Schools, replaced this past year. You see, it was built with galvanized pipe. Well, galvanized pipe over time, obviously corrosion, you can see how small that opening is just based on the corrosion there. That's been replaced. However, a large portion of this building plumbing system is underneath existing concrete slab and therefore inaccessible. So therefore, in order to replace the entire plumbing under that building is very expensive, and it reflects so in our, in one of our maintenance costs. The second one, you know, our boilers, they're there, we've been repairing them, we keep them up, but they drip, they drop, but we just have improvised and created an alternate solution to keep them going till it's replaced. So therefore, you see, we create a piping system that just allows it to continue to leak and just run over over time. Same thing with some of our HVAC systems and stuff like that. So therefore, but the whole point is, this is repair cost, okay? This is not total renovation. This is to repair things that need to be fixed on this site, okay? Does not include components to bring it up to code. Now, we get into the cost of feasibility analysis, it allows us to look at some of those items that need to be taken care of to bring the building up to code. This is a state DPI form that we have to use for guidelines to determine whether this is a candidate for renovation, or is it a candidate for replacement, or whatever. And in doing so, it has a checklist within the form itself, and you got parts 1A and parts 2A and 2B. You go in and assign points to different components of the building and the site. Once you reach that total points, then you evaluate it. In this particular case, the score required to move forward with a renovation, according to the state guidelines, is 18. Beverly Hills received a score of four. On the site side of that analysis, which is on the sheet, they had to receive a score of seven or more, and receive a score of seven, which means it's very marginal as to whether or not you could actually use this site for a replacement site, should you wish to replace it.
Who performed this analysis?
This analysis is done in-house, okay? We sit down and done that, and then also worked in conjunction with some of our previous bids, and we just take them on cost of components, that sort of thing. And then the form is set up to do just that. The form of the state created the form for you as a school system builder, sit down and do this analysis for you. But during that analysis, look at all the different functions that have to be done. There's some functional improvements that need to be necessary just to make the building function well, you know, changes to corridors, access, ADA, expanding bathrooms, those sort of things. Those are things that have to be done in order to make it more functional to meet, you know, today's standards as far as DPS is concerned. You obviously have some building code and safety improvements, which are pretty extensive as well. The total, including, well, one item here is a small hazardous material movement, because we do have some of our, in order to be able to do some of the replacements, we have to go in and remediate some of the existing materials that was used in 1953, and they're still there. As long as you don't disturb them, they're fine. But once you start renovations, you do have to mitigate those and take those out of service. But the total cost, including architectural design fees and contingency fees, and those percentages that are set by DPI within that form, total of $23,790,000. So this is significantly higher than just the repair costs in order to bring the building totally up to code.
But it includes the repair cost in it?
Yes. If you did everything on this list, it would cover all the repair costs, deferred maintenance costs, okay?
And I know you're talking about dollars here, but what would be the timeline and the number of months or days, hours or seconds to implement this renovation?
It would probably be at least a two-year renovation.
A 24-month cycle.
As one, you have to demolish and remove everything, and then start back and build new. Like I said before, most of the components within there, a lot of the components are just not accessible.
Can't get to them.
Because they're under slabs, you have to tear the slab out to get to them. Some of the expansions you would have to deal with, just building expansions, you have to make an order to accommodate restroom expansions or ADA access, some way to try to create some kind of ramping system, which, on this site, based on the X, Y, and Z and vertical dimensions of the school, are pretty darn impossible, you know?
So the entire facility would be closed down, hypothetically, theoretically?
If you chose to renovate.
For that 24 months?
Yes, you would have to move away off-site to do that, yes, sir.
Thank you.
One question I have. There's no way to use any of the existing building at all if you, I mean, you know, I know there was a newer part of that building there. I mean, the back part of the building, you could not utilize that part of the building at all than your time.
No, ma'am, that portion of the building could be salvaged and saved. It is built back in the 90s and is in pretty good shape. As a matter of fact, when you're looking through the Fanning Howey Study, it does give points to that portion of the building being in good shape. Other components were built in 1953, are not so good. So they would, you know, there's definitely a wide range. There's actually three, three different ages of that building. The original starting in 53, 63, and then, of course, in the 90s. So, yes, there are components of the building that can be used. What you get into sometimes is trying to utilize what's there. It's like, kind of like the tail wagging the dog, you're trying to build around what's there, and it costs you more just to be able to utilize what's there because of where it is, and it may not be in a great location to be able to utilize it, so you end up spending more money trying to use what you had versus just demolishing and start over. Give example, Royal Oaks, we were able to do that. We had a portion of the building, we were able to do it, and we were able to build it based where it sat on the site, was able to design around that to be able to actually use that as a component of the building without a lot of extra expense. In this case here, it might be a little more difficult simply because it's two-story and it doesn't access, but from the top and the bottom, it doesn't really access both ways, okay? Yes, ma'am. Replacement costs. Obviously, we go through the same calculator, through the replacement costs. Right now, current Royal Oaks is, Beverly Hills, I'm sorry, I've been talking about Royal Oaks a long time. Beverly Hills is 49,600 square feet to house the students. That is well below DPI standards for the size of school it needs to be to be able to house 400 students. If you replace it today, based on new class sizes and the requirements for classroom sizes, it would need to be 75,000 square feet. Currently, we're seeing in the construction market, a cost of about $230 per square foot for that replacement cost to do total new construction. So if... So if you put that into play with the, the seventy-five thousand square feet, two hundred and thirty dollars per square foot, we do have some land costs should you, uh, try to utilize that site, which, uh, would be a little bit difficult because there's some demolition work and there's also some retaining walls necessary in order to create enough building area. You can imagine, the forty-nine thousand square feet going to seventy-five thousand square feet, we almost have a fifty percent increase in footprint in order to try to fit in the same space. Obviously, there have to be some adjustments made to the land. The total cost for replacement for a four-hundred student school would be twenty million, nine hundred sixty thousand dollars, which is obviously less than renovation cost. So it is not a candidate for renovation. So in summary, I threw out a lot of numbers and repairs. The Fanning-Howey study, ten point three million dollars was fix what's broken or at near its life cycle. Okay? It may not be broken today, but it may be well beyond its life cycle so it could break any day. Kind of like driving your car on hundred thousand mile tires. You may make it to the next trip, but it may blow out just as easy as it makes it to the trip. That's kind of analogy, if you wish. Capital repairs, again, that is repairing what's, needs to be fixed or what is broken. Replacement of windows, replacement of HVAC system, the water system, that sort of things. That's what the repair cost, ten point six million dollars. Renovation cost, twenty-three point eight, and replacement cost of basically twenty-one million dollars. Those are the four numbers you see, and that's how they line up and how, what they represent. Okay? Construction cost, uh, we also look at, you know, based on what it costs you to build a new school and, and what we have spent in the past. WR Dodelle was built in a very good market. It was a very good construction climate at that point in time. It's a nine hundred and forty-one student school. We built it for tw- uh, basically, this is building cost only, okay? It doesn't include furniture and architectural fees and all that sort of thing. I'm just doing building cost to building cost so that we have oranges and apples here. It was eighteen thousand, eighteen million, six hundred thousand dollars for a cost of about twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand dollars per student seat. Royal Oaks we're currently building has a capacity of seven hundred and fifty students. Uh, it has a cost of twenty-one million dollars, you know, about twenty, twenty-nine thousand dollars per seat. Our new Southwest Elementary School, unfortunately, was not in, in a favorable construction market, but it has nine hundred and forty-one students. It's going to cost twenty-six million, five hundred fifty-one thousand dollars for a nine hundred and forty-one student school, which is about twenty-nine thousand. Now, we estimate based on replacement for Ro- our Brown McAllister and Culture Web Elementary Schools on their existing sites, they have a little bit more favorable sites as far as rebuilding on it. However, you can see that the cost of, the size and the cost of construction in the urban environment is significantly higher. We're averaging about thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars per seat. Beverly Hills with four hundred students, which is significantly smaller than the rest of them, having a, uh, a cost of, of construction of seventeen million, six hundred thousand, has a total seat cost of forty-six thousand, four hundred, uh, three hundred seventy-three dollars per, per square, per student. So, uh, quite a bit higher as far as cost to replace that small school on that site. North County Department of, uh, Instruction requires every year that we complete a, a, a study on what our facility needs are. And they could create a, a form that we fill out that, that talks about what repairs need to be made, what additions need to be made, what new schools, uh, needs to be done to add seats to your system. And you file it with the DPI every five years. DPI uses that basically as a, a planning tool. It allows them to go to legislation and says, you know, we have X number of needs within our school system. So we do it for every single school, every single building we do. However, we did one for, uh, our facilities need for Beverly Hills, and it does not have a component for the facility's needs because it was based on Fanning-Howey study and based on our feasibility study, it was so closed facility. So therefore, we do not have one for the actual, uh, capacity needs for that school. However, on the survey needs, um, so it also didn't have one for Royal Oaks. We also didn't have one for Malpens Middle School because all those schools were actually under replacement. So therefore, you do not have all that. But we send one of those to the school every year. And when you do the, the form work, it does, it does show us that we would close that facility. It has been for the last two times we've done it. The ten-year plan, uh, that was approved by the board, uh, does not include any definitive plans for reuse of the Beverly Hill facility, but it does have the recommendation that we close that facility and consolidate, consolidate that facility, I guess is the way to say it. Not close it, consolidate that facility with Royal Oaks with some options. I gave you several options, I think, within the ten-year plan to be able to renovate that school for a future purpose. Okay?
Mr. Louder, um, just to kind of stay on the subject, um, a few weeks or months ago, we had some discussions on the new elementary school, um, Southwest Elementary School, and the additional costs that were unanticipated at that school mainly because of steel and labor. Are these scenarios that you're laying out here also based on those current costs of, of, um, products and supplies and, and, uh, skilled labor to, have you, I'm sure you have, but, uh, have you, um, baked in all of those current, um, expenses into these, uh, projections?
Sir, what, what we did was, um, we calculated the square footage necessary and we use the current construction market analysis. It shows the average school going for about two hundred and thirty dollars per square foot.
And that's regional or nationwide or southeast or?
State.
State.
And ours was right at, right at two-thirty is ours as well, uh, for the Hickory Ridge Elementary School, was right at two, two-twenty-nine.
Pretty much by the same, uh, yardstick?
Yes, sir. They tell right along, so we feel pretty comfortable using two-thirty. Now, a year from now, two years from now, that market may change.
Yeah.
And it would not be.
Yeah, yeah.
Not trying to do it on today's dollar.
By, by current expenses?
Yes, sir. Okay? With that, I want for, for Ms. Klutz to, uh, talk to you a little bit about the financial impact of the school itself.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I need this back. Thank you.
Yeah, so finally, um, we'll talk about the financial impact, um, of some of these items. So initially, maintenance cost, then operating cost, personnel consolidation savings, and then the additional school facility cost. So starting, um, with our maintenance cost, we looked at the average, uh, elementary school in Cabarrus County schools, and I'll take you over to the fourth column over where it says maintenance cost per square foot. So if we look at the cost, um, for our average elementary, we're looking at twenty cent per square foot per normal elementary in the, in the district. Energy cost, a dollar eleven per square foot. And then student costs or maintenance cost by student, per student is a hundred and sixty-one, thirty-eight. You can see the corresponding numbers below for Beverly Hills specifically. Um, sixty-four cent per square foot of maintenance cost. Um, the energy cost is, is in line with the, the average. And then the cost per student for maintenance cost is also elevated at two oh seven.
Those true averages, um, or was there some school that was very high and some other school that was very low that you took out, or is it an average of all elementary schools?
Average of all of the Cabarrus County schools that we have, elementary schools. I took out the middle and high school, but this is all of the elementary schools. And so that's the average of those. Okay? Then we want to take a look at operating costs. There's a lot of numbers on here, so I'll try to walk you through it. Um, the first column, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen expense, that's the general ledger expense. That's for things that it takes to operate that school on a daily basis, like teachers and teacher assistants, staff, utilities, those type of things. So if you'll sit, you'll notice in the Harrisburg Elementary line item, um, and let me just note, the two thousand sixteen, seventeen year data was used because we've not completed seventeen, eighteen, and we want a full picture representation of the, the expense. So we want you to, we want to be able to see, um, the cost per student based on the capacity of the building. We also want to see the cost per student based on the average daily membership. And for folks that are not familiar with our terminology, average daily membership is just the number of seats, or children in seats at one particular time. So for sixteen, seventeen, Harrisburg had a thousand thirty-five, um, students in seats. Their program capacity is what their building was programmed for. That's nine hundred and eighty-eight. So you can see that that school is over capacity. You see that their per pupil expense, um, by, based on their average daily membership is four thousand one hundred and thirty-six. And while if it were at, uh, program capacity, it would be four thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Um, as we look at the other schools and we'll, we'll compare in relation, but what, what this slide is telling you is if we maximize utilization of our current schools, then our per cost, uh, per student is lower. And you can see that going through, through the slides. Um, Beverly Hills is about at capacity. Um, so their per pupil expense is about five thousand dollars. And if you were to look at program capacity, because they're right in line, is about the same. But if you'll take Wyancoff, for example, um, their per pupil expense based on their average daily membership appears to be a little high, five thousand four hundred and sixty-one. But if you look across, you can see that they are not at capacity. They are not utilizing all of this program space. If we were to place more students in Wyancoff, you would see that, that per pupil expenditure go down. Um, you can see that over to the left of four thousand eight hundred and thirty-six if we were maximizing the utilization of that, um, that, that school. So then if you look at the average, um, we're generally, um, it costs approximately four thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars if you look at all of the elementary schools in the district. And you can see how they align. So by maximizing our space utilization, um, Harrisburg is down to four thousand one hundred and thirty-six. Okay? The next slide is about personnel consolidation savings. So, um, if we were to consolidate and close Beverly Hills, we could save approximately five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars a year. Um, that is a reoccurring savings. Um, those, that would increase every year because their salary and benefit increases each year. The only, um, the footnote that I would say is that, um, the state allocates one principal per school. So if we close the school, we would not get the allocation from the state. Um, so we would not get those dollars, but we would get all of the others. So, um, in reality, instead of five thirty-four, it's probably more like four hundred and fifty because the state actually would not allocate that state principal paid position because we would already have one, one per school. Okay? The Royal Oaks, Wyancoff, and other adjacent schools can absorb the, the population of Beverly Hills at no additional cost. Um, and as you saw on the screen on the slide prior, if we utilize our space, then our per pupil expenses will be reduced. And as we say here, there's enough space in our current existing facilities without spending additional dollars. Okay? And in summary, uh, regarding student impact, the proposed closure of Beverly Hills will continue to provide students with all current program choice options, provide, provide them with more adequate facilities, classroom space, and accessibility for all students in relatively close proximity to the current enrollment areas. For the facility analysis, the excessive repair, renovation, replacement costs necessary to maintain the operation of a sixty-five-year-old facility on a site with serious limitations or major considerations to recommend the closure of this facility. Financial, the closure of, closure of Beverly Hills Elementary will result in operational savings, lower per student cost, facility cost savings, and no adverse impact on transportation costs. Closing the school is significantly less costly than renovation, repair, or replacement. Based on the information from this study, the recommendation is to close Beverly Hills Elementary consistent with the ten-year plan approved by the Board of Education in February, two thousand eighteen.
Uh, my only question is, you said there was no impact on transportation cost, but how could that be if it's further away from the other schools? For instance, it is further away, and I got in my car and checked that mileage out. And I know from door to door, like from, from, from Royal Oak, I mean, from Arm McAllister to Beverly Hills, it was like three miles. From Beverly Hills to Royal Oaks, it was, it was five miles. So that's two miles, I mean, just from door to door. That's not taking any other route. That was just going straight. So that's two miles difference there. It was two miles difference further just from, just from that point to that point. So it would have to be further diff, this, and, and besides the, the congestion trying to get through all those, mm, 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 and, I mean, that was bad to begin with.
Yeah, Mrs. Carpenter?
But what I'm wondering, there has to be a transportation difference.
There's actually, um, uh, Mr. Schumaker, do you want to mention he did the research on the distance?
Ms. Carpenter, I did a Google map search to, last night, just to confirm the distances and the, there are two route, two, several routes to Royal Oaks from Beverly Hills, and all of them are three point three miles. Um, so it's not five miles. I don't know what route you happen to take.
I went straight down twenty-nine.
Going down twenty-nine is three point three miles. Right to Dakota Avenue in front of that student school.
Going straight from?
Going straight from Beverly Hills to that school at Royal Oaks. No, we're just talking distances. She was talking about from Beverly Hills to?
I need to caution the crowd. We need to maintain protocol tonight. So, uh, if you will, please not shout from the audience. If you have questions and you're signed up to be a speaker, you can certainly, um, ask those then and, and we'll try to get the answers for you. But, uh, it's very important that you do not speak out tonight. Thank you.
No.
Just have a general.
Check it.
I did.
Have a general question.
I can't hear you, Richard.
Changing the surgery.
Dr. Probst?
I think it depends on the location where someone lives. There are sections of the Beverly Hills District that actually are not as long, Carolyn, as what you're discussing. But the cost of a two-mile difference is marginal. We're talking gas for two miles. It's very, very minimal.
So it wouldn't, that, that was my question.
We can absorb it. We are driving much longer routes at other sites. That would not be an issue. And the fact that we don't have to buy additional school buses, which would have been the issue, is, is, is a good thing, too.
So there's no, there would not be? Okay, that was my, my question.
Um, and I'd just like to ask a general question about the methodology of this report. Y'all are real smart people. You amaze me every day. I truly mean that sincerely. Um, but, um, I believe Mr. Louder said a moment ago that some of the, um, uh, analysis was done in-house. Have y'all done any kind of peer, uh, peer review type of thing? If that's appropriate with other, I mean, historically from your own experience or, or, uh, other school districts? Am I calling up a buddy across the line somewhere and saying, is my, is my calculation making sense? I'm just trying to ask what your, um, for me, from, if I were gonna, my, what would be my sanity check about the methodology that you're doing? How have you confirmed objectively what you know in-house? I guess the easiest way of answering the question.
We built three elementary schools in the past four years. And so we took all those elementary schools, look at the components, which are, that's huh? We built three elementary schools in the past four years. We just received bids on the third one. That's the most up-to-date data you'll get as far as components within the school system. Took those components and utilized those as far as each type of trade and then pulled those in and filled in the form with real numbers from real square footages from real bids. And that was transferred into this form work to real, to create the file. Now, as far as what their people in the rest of the state don't know, but this is what we've done in the last three we've built. So it was able to pull those numbers in directly into the form and utilize that historical cost associated with it.
Okay. Board members, in the interest of time with our audience tonight and needing to get to a public hearing, um, we are not voting on anything tonight. Um, so, uh, if you would gather your questions and send them to Carolyn and I by Wednesday evening, if at all possible, so staff has time to research, answer your questions. Um, and you may have more questions after the public hearing as well tonight. So like I said, please take your notes and gather those. Uh, we'd like to try to get through a couple of these action items that were required, in some cases by law, uh, to vote on things before the end of our fiscal year on, uh, June thirtieth. So are you all okay with moving forward? Okay. Um, five point oh one, uh, Mr. Ben Alred for the twenty eighteen, nineteen early college memorandum of agreement, I guess it is, A, uh, with Rowan Cabarrus Community College.
Just entertain any questions you have. Um, I highlighted some of the changes. Had our attorneys look over that. Had our attorneys look over that as well in the Special Education Department, but if you have questions, we'll take those now.
Can you go over those changes, Ben?
So if you'll look down in section, hold on just a second, 9.4. Do you have that, Kelly? Okay, thank you. It, it's primarily a restatement of how we serve students with five of four plans, ADA and IEPs. There's a crossover between how colleges serve students and how public schools serve students, so this just more clearly articulates it. Mr. Schwartz can probably speak better to that.
Madam Chair, we, we may need to suggest a revision to this, but we're gonna have to figure that out in communication with the other parties and, and our own staff.
Is substantial revision or only to 9.4?
Only to 9.4, minor revision, potentially. We're gonna, we need to, we need more information first.
Okay, and you'll be able to finish that this week?
Yes.
So we have time to review whatever the additional changes are?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And just for the public, Mr. Alred, can you just share what this agreement is for, which programs?
Sure. We have two early colleges, the Cabarrus Early College of Technology and the Cabarrus Kannapolis Early College. Each year we enter into a memorandum of agreement, which covers facilities, instruction, community college courses, costs, liaisons, et cetera. So there's a lot of information in there to make sure that the spaces that we use, the instruction that we get, and the money we spend is agreed upon between all the institutions.
Okay. And just for the parents who are here, if you're not familiar with this and you have a child nearing the end of middle school, perhaps, this is a great program or two programs to look at, where the children come out of high school and college with an associate degree, basically at no cost to you, so they've gone to two years of college when they graduate.
Are there any other changes, Ben?
No. There were some small changes where a word was missed last year, updates of dates. There was a removal of the board chair's actual name, just because board chairs tend to change in years outside of the MOA. Unfortunately, they left Mr. Schumaker's email address in, but took his name out, but that'll be changed.
So other than 9.4, it's essentially the same agreement we approved last year?
Okay, and that will go to the action agenda, so you can read it over additionally this week if you like. Okay?
Something about PE or something? Did you say that?
The change to PE, Carolyn, was the course that was used changed title, so they had to change the title of the course in the MOA.
At Roan Cabarrus, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, next item is 5.02, the academic fees list, with Mr. Alred again.
So each year what we provide for you is a running list of the fees over the previous five, six years as they build, so you can see the changes in fees over time. What Dr. Probst has pulled up right now is the description page. If you'll, can you scroll to the next page? I can do it. I have Ctrl 2, don't I? Are there two documents in there, or just? I thought you scrolled one. So there's two things that changed this year. One is, we added in the elementary school yearbook. That is not a new fee. Elementary students have had the opportunity to buy a yearbook for years to be consistent with middle school and high school. We added that in. The fee that's there is not required, it's an optional fee, and it represents the maximum that any yearbook would be. Same thing for middle and high school. AP World History is not a new AP World, AP course, but it is new to our district over the last three years, and so teachers requested that we add a fee to purchase supplies in that class. But other than that, there have been no changes.
Any questions, board members? I think we need to do an action.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, he'll be on the action agenda next week?
I think he had, did he have a question?
I did. I just, again, we're some, is this every fee that every kid's, that covers everything? Or what do we, there's gotta be things that are missing?
These fees are consistent with Board Policy 4600, which are fee, academic fees.
Academic fees.
Academic fees, yes. The Board, a few years ago, requested that we include some additional things on there. So you'll see that the graduation cap and gown is on there, the transcript fee for alumni is on here, as well as the yearbooks, which are not required fees. What we ask anybody that does this is they have to, if they have a fee and a classroom has to go through a school-based procedure, and then they have to request that to the Board annually.
Okay, but like a marching band fee is not in here?
Pardon me?
Like marching band fees are not in here?
Marching band is extracurricular activity, so you don't include athletics and things like that.
Okay, so athletics and march, and extracurricular fees are not in here, like the robotics and that type of thing?
Correct.
Okay. Do we compile a list of those as well?
We do not.
How do we ensure they're consistent?
Pardon me?
How, then how do we ensure they're consistent across schools?
We can collect that if we need to, but to date, we've not been requested to.
Yeah, and I think different schools have different, I'll say, levels of participation in marching band, or even in athletics, cheerleading competitions or not. All those are pretty much by school.
It would be nice to know that we're consistent, at least have a, have a listing of those fees at some point, not tomorrow or whatever.
Yeah, that, I don't think that would fall under Ben's area.
Well, whoever's area it is, we, I'd like to see that at some point.
I'm not sure.
I just misunderstood. Did you say you would like the fees tomorrow?
No.
I would not like to see the fees tomorrow.
I thought I heard tomorrow.
No, sir. I don't need them tomorrow. I just think it would be, yeah, just being consistent.
Yeah, and they, they are not consistent, I know.
No.
I was like, back in the day, is there, do we still have the cap on the band expense? Because I know at some point that was kind of getting out of control, so. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Alred? So we'll go to the 5.03 Career and Technical Education Application for State and Federal Mr. Parker, welcome.
Good evening. I saw the clocks, I know this will be probably my most abbreviated presentation ever.
Yeah.
I will let you know, I uploaded three documents for all of you to review, the presentation for the evening, which I'll, I'll cut short, but also the executive summary that explains what the local plan is about, and also the dollar amounts that are included. And also, there is an, a document that needs signatures from Dr. Lauder and also Ms. Furtenbaum, which is actually the, the documentation that DPI needs me to keep track of, that we are committed to completing the plan. I will, for the sake of time, skip down to some of these slides here. On the screen, right? There we go. I'm gonna skip a few here. The local planning system, and what I've got on the screen here now is, it's actually split into two parts, and this is the, what the Department of Public Instruction requires us to, to do, is put together a plan for performance and how we're gonna improve over the 18-19 school year. It's split into two parts. The first one is the four-year strategic plan, which I've made sure that it aligns with the district's strategic plan. So as you read through it, you'll see a lot of references to that. Also, part two is our performance indicators and how we're gonna create strategies to improve those performance indicators. I'm gonna go ahead and skip the next two slides just briefly. They're, the four-year plan and also the performance indicators. One thing, what I will say that you'll see is also a reference to third-party vendors. We're still partnering with National Academy Foundation for our academies, so as you look through the, the plan, you'll see that reference in there. The next slide is CTE enrollment. We are increasing in CTE, so this year, our enrollment is 12,028 students. That continues to increase. A few of the success stories that we've had this year is we're reactually refreshing computers, we, around the district. This year's full refresh was at Jam Robinson. The coming school year, we're planning for Cox Mill. And we're also refreshing a lot of the kitchen equipment, a lot of the supplies and, that we have, and a lot of our kitchens are out of date. And also, there are some of them that just need to be replaced completely, so we're taking them out and totally refreshing them. We also began a partnership with Constructive Learning Design, which is providing professional development for our leadership team and also our teachers. So we'll continue that, that, it's actually on instructional coaching, we'll continue those sessions for 18-19. This is the slide that I wanted to get to real quick, was the new programs that we're starting in 18-19. For the Family Consumer Science Program, we're bringing in a third-party vendor curriculum called Pro Start. The Pro Start curriculum is an industry credential, basically. It, the whole curriculum is built around an industry credential. And what we want to do is increase enrollment in the hospitality and tourism cluster. So that course actually fits within that cluster, so that we can increase that amount of concentrators in that area. The other one is a course called Principles of Biomedical Science, and it's part of Project Lead the Way. If you've heard of Project Lead the Way, they are a third-party vendor that provides engineering and health sciences curriculum. We're bringing them in just for the academy at Northwest Cabarrus, and that, that course is actually for freshmen, so freshmen in 18-19 will start that course. We're also looking at how we can bring in more industry credentials and make them replace some of our post-assessments. Right now in CTE, every single course has to have a post-assessment tied to it, and so the Department of Public Instruction is encouraging us to look at how we tie those credentials and certifications in place of the post-assessment. So you'll see some of that happen in the next school year. One of the things you'll read, if you, if you read through our local plan online, is a tremendously huge amount of references to special population students. The federal Perkins legislation is constantly speaking about special population students. And so what we've done in our district for the coming year is realigned a position so that we will have a special populations coordinator. They will be the liaison between the EC Department and the ESL Department, also working with students that are in non-traditional coursework. So you'll see that come on in 18-19. One of the things that we've talked about just about every time I'm up here is work-based learning. So I'm gonna realign this for the coming school year, the academy coordinator positions that we have, there'll be four of them. They're gonna be sharing a high school to work for all the academies in the district, and then their title will change to work-based learning coordinator. They will be the go-to person for anything to do with apprenticeships, pre-apprenticeships, job shadowing, or internship opportunities. So that will be one thing that changes in the 18-19 year. The big piece of the puzzle also is the career development coordinator position. We're gonna be changing that title to career and technical education coordinator, and what they're gonna do is not just be working with students and student, and career development opportunities, but also they're gonna be the instructional coach for all the CTE teachers that are in our department. So we've been providing instructional coaching training for all of them for this current school year, and we'll continue that into the new school year, and then they will become the instructional coach for all of the CTE teachers. There are a lot of slides on here about performance, and I'm gonna skip them.
It's great information.
It's great information, but I'm gonna skip them for the sake of time. The one that I was gonna get to is the 3S1 and 4S1. These are the ones about graduation cohorts, and as you can see, we are at 99%. We can still get a little bit better. I'm envious there were some that hit 100 on this next slide. So I know we had Forsyth and Guilford, they hit 100, and even Gaston hit 100. So I've got a little bit of room to improve.
So what, what is a 3S1 and a 4S1?
3S1 is students that graduated, all the students that graduated. 4S1 is the cohort graduation rate. So that's the differentiation between the two. But for us, they're both the same, they're both at 99%. And this is for all stu-
So, Mr. Parker, if I may, I believe that shows, Rob, that if students are engaged in the pathway of a CTE pathway, that they are more likely to graduate as opposed to maybe just taking the minimum courses they needed to take, you know, to meet their 28 hours, 32 hours, whatever, so.
That is correct. We have eight performance indicators, and the one that's called technical attainment, it's 2S1 on the slides. That's the one that's, every single student that takes a CTE course, that's the one that they, that's their post-assessment scores. But all of the other ones are based on concentrator status. So the ones that you see on here, these are students that actually graduated with a four-course CTE concentration. So CTE keeps kids in school, that's our mantra. Let me skip a few of these down to this part. For our budget for this year, we actually had an increase of 36 months of employment from the state. Also, our PRC 14 state funds increased 17,000, almost $18,000. The budget that was built for today was actually on the current school year's PRC 17 federal budget, because we had not received those amounts yet. Actually, they came in today, which, so I have not been able to update the PowerPoint, which was an increase of roughly $30,000. What I'll do is resubmit the cover sheet to Eileen, that way all of you have a copy of that, and you'll, you'll see the actual amount for 17.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
How do you, how does the state support your budget increase by 17.6? How did that, is that just because of our growth as a system?
Yes, sir, it is.
Is that, that was, that was, so as long as we grow, then that budget will increase according to what we grow?
It is. A lot of the CTE budgets are built on a formula that includes poverty and also just growth within that, that region or that community. And so for us, you can see Cabarrus County's growing by leaps and bounds. I found out that in our region, there was only three school districts that received an increase. It was us, Charlotte Meck, and Kannapolis City. So it's very obvious where the growth is. So that's why those numbers went up. The last slide is really the, the link to this presentation and also to our LPS. So if you wanna read through it, the username and password is guest, guest, and it's wide open, so you can see exactly what I created, so real creative on that username and password. That was a very fast presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be performing at the Ed Center all week long. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we are done with our, I'll say, our traditional work session agenda.
So is that an action item or consent item?
I'm sorry?
Is that an action or a consent item?
Those are all consent. I'm sorry, action, action.
Action.
Yeah, that whole section was action. Okay, at this time, I would like to take a five-minute recess, so that, one, we get the final list, I see that's coming in now, of people who are signed up, and give us an opportunity just to get up and stretch for a moment, because we have not only public hearing, which many of you are here for, but then we have a fair amount of topics after that enclosed session as well. So we have quite a long evening ahead of us yet. So we will be back, it is 6:39, let's say 6:45. Good evening. This is the June 4th Board of Education Work Session and Public Hearing. We are back from recess and ready to begin the public hearing. Board members, I'll take a motion that the public hearing on the proposed closing of Beverly Hills Elementary School be opened to public input. Mr. Walter made the motion, and that was, who made it? Mr. Harrison made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 7-0, and the public hearing is now open. We'll have our first speaker, I believe it's Sharon Faust-Burpo?
Shannon.
Pardon me?
Shannon.
Shannon, yes. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Just for kind of the rules and the roads, so bear with me a second here. Speakers will be called by the board chair to approach the podium to address the board regarding the proposed closing of Beverly Hills Elementary School, in the order in which they signed up to speak. Individuals may speak for three minutes, and persons speaking on behalf of a group, and the group had to be pre-designated when you signed up, may speak for five minutes. Groups must select one speaker to represent them. Speakers may address the board only one time in one capacity. So there is a clock that we can see here, and you'll, Mr. Basilese, I guess, is telling folks about that it will beep to give you the warning, and then when your three minutes is up, we'll move to the next speaker. So you may proceed.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As we continue the conversation started eight months ago, I ask that you all go back and revisit the various hearings and correspondence regarding the closure of Beverly Hills. To paraphrase some of you from over the years, one of the most important things is the history and the community. It means a lot to the neighborhood and community. Removing that school would be like ripping the heart out of the community. Now imagine you'd said those things about Beverly Hills. In 2014, it seems you were much more willing to think outside the box. With dozens of modular units across the county, from Cox Mill to Wyancoff, and exploding gross training capacity, you've built a second school in the Odell community for grades three to five, leaving K2 students in the older building nearly two miles away. While this configuration is not unheard of, it is unusual, as was noted by former chairman Blake Keiger in a 2014 Tribune article. Tonight, I'd like to propose more out-of-the-box thinking. Some ideas might include making Royal Oaks a K8 school. This would allow you to discern if there is enough countywide interest to put fine arts in a high school over the next three to four years, creating a completed pipeline for the children currently excelling in the program. Rebuild Beverly Hills on-site with multiple stories, using a smaller footprint, yet yielding a higher capacity. Renovate the three neighborhood schools, and use two for grades K2 and the other for 3-5. This would allow each respective neighborhood to maintain its historic community charm, preserve seats for the phasing in of the state mandated class-size restrictions, and promote further collaboration within the communities. Given the county manager's proposed two-cent property tax increase, it seems fiscally responsible to consider the possible negative impact on funding when removing amenities such as walkable schools. In the same Tribune article referenced earlier, former board member Lynn Shu said, "When you're looking at several thousand homes and parents, to have four or five complaints or concerns is not too bad. Conversely, when you're looking at several hundred homes and parents, to have thousands of complaints or concerns is at minimum reason to pause." We have heard from some of you that you are opposed to the closure of Beverly Hills. I am urging you to stand up. Stand up for our community. Stand up for our school. Stand up for the taxpayers who faithfully paid for decades to fund new schools across the county. Honor the communities who asked to be respected and invested in, as they've invested in others over the years. Cherish our county's diversity, from the large, new, and growing areas to the historic and established, and embrace what that diversity has to offer current and prospective residents and their children. I am again asking you to save our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. The next speaker is Dr. Amanda Cook, and she is speaking on behalf of the physicians in support of Beverly Hills. Welcome, Dr. Cook.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this opportunity tonight, and I want to thank you also for your service. I am here tonight as a mother of three daughters that currently attend Beverly Hills STEM School. I'm here as a professional in a STEM career, and I'm here as a pediatric specialist, and I serve the children of Cabarrus County. According to the U.S. Department of Commerce, STEM occupations are growing at 17%, while other occupations are growing at less than 10%. STEM degree holders have a higher income than non-STEM careers. STEM workers play a key role in the sustained growth and stability of the U.S. economy. STEM education creates critical thinkers, increases science literacy, enables the next generation of innovators. This innovation in science literacy depends on a solid knowledge base in the STEM areas. Most jobs of the future will require a basic understanding of math and science. By exposing students to STEM and giving them opportunities to explore STEM-related concepts, they will develop a passion for it and be more likely to pursue a STEM career. STEM education helps to bridge the ethnic and gender gaps sometimes found in math and science fields. Initiatives have been established to increase the roles of women and minorities in STEM-related fields. STEM education breaks the traditional gender roles. STEM education is critical to help the United States remain a world leader. If you close Beverly Hills STEM School, then our STEM option becomes Wyancoff Elementary. Wyancoff Elementary already has more than 800 children enrolled. We have been told that there will be a capacity at Wyancoff for an additional 135 children. Those 135 seats will be filled by not only the kindergartners that live in that district, but also the Spanish immersion program. Most likely, there will be less than 100 STEM seats at Wyancoff for our student body at Beverly Hills, which is currently 414 children. If you close Beverly Hills STEM School, there will not be enough STEM seats for the children in our program that are interested. Many of the elementary schools in Cabarrus County have outgrown their building and have expanded into trailers. Why would you close a brick-and-mortar school building like Beverly Hills and place even more children into trailers? I'm sure the answer is because that's the cheaper thing to do, but at what cost? Not only are the children and educators in trailers exposed to elements, but in this day and age, it is simply not safe. It is challenging enough to maintain security of a real building, but a series of trailers is nearly impossible for staff and resource officers to keep safe from a catastrophic tragedy. While as a society, we may heatedly debate the best prevention of school shootings, I think we can agree that these heinous crimes are mostly committed by people who do not value human life. They do not value their own human life, and they do not value the lives of others. Teaching the value of human life starts at home, and it starts with us as parents. But our school-aged children spend most of their waking hours in school. Therefore, the school shares in this responsibility. Children need to feel a sense of belonging to their school community. They need to feel that they are known and that they matter, as opposed to being members of just some nameless herd in a very large school. Elementary children range in age from four to 12 years of age. The human element in small schools is critical to healthy development. I believe that closing small neighborhood schools like Beverly Hills can have very negative ramifications for the public health of the children in Cabarrus County. There is 40 years of data that indicates students in smaller schools have higher attendance. They have fewer dropouts. There's fewer incidences of disciplinary action and violence. There are higher levels of extracurricular participation in smaller schools and more parental involvement. Children with shorter commutes to school have more time available for after-school studies, physical activity, and a good night's sleep. Children are the most vulnerable of our society. I request that you advocate for our children and vote to keep Beverly Hills STEM School open. I appreciate your attention tonight.
Mr. Jim Fulton? Mr. Jim Fulton?
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening to the superintendent and members of the board. Thank you very much for listening to us tonight. My name is Jim Fulton. I'm a McAllister parent, and I oppose the closing of Beverly Hills. First, I want to be clear that I seriously disagree with just about everything said tonight about the process that got us here, the cost of renovation versus replacement, and the staff recommendation to close the school. But I'm taking the high road and trusting in your deliberation and judgment, fair-minded in this with what I'm about to, for what I'm about to say. We chose where to live, as is the case with many families, because of the character of our schools. And I don't mean the ranking of academic performance, but their diversity, their small size, their location, and their importance to the community. Our kids travel to school on roads they know well, excuse me, through neighborhoods they are familiar with and past houses of friends, teachers, and administrators they see every day. The importance of the school is reinforced for our children through former students who return as teachers, through parents who were students in return, so their children could enjoy the same positive educational experience they had, and through neighbors whose grown children attended the school and who may someday want to return. Because our schools are small, teachers, administrators, students, and their families know each other, which improves communication, understanding, safety, security, and most of all fosters a sense of community and belonging in our children. The proximity and accessibility of the school to the community facilitates parental involvement in student education, which is one of the most important indicators of academic success, especially at the primary level. Small school size has likewise been shown to provide substantial academic benefit, especially to children at risk. In previous meetings, you've heard civic leaders describe in detail the significance of these schools to our community, the void that would be left if they are closed, and the trust placed in the stewardship of the county when these schools were turned over to you. Do not think that closing our schools and sending our children elsewhere is a neutral proposition, just so long as they have a seat in a classroom. In all of the discussions around the closings and redistricting of our schools, I've never heard that they don't work. They are in stable communities, they are diverse, parents and students know and love them, the community is involved and supports them, former students return to teaching them. They are exactly the kind of schools that we should be trying to keep open. And that is why I'm asking that these schools be left open, renovated or replaced in kind, and returned to us. And I think the issue simply comes down to one of fairness and choice. Every generation pays forward for the next. Our schools were built by an established community as a gesture and faith, hope, and a demonstration of civic responsibility. And we have the same obligation to communities that are springing up in undeveloped areas of the county. The problem is that while we're being asked to supply other people's choice to live out in the county, to pay for their schools, for their police, their fire protection, and maintain all of their infrastructure, we're also expected to give up our schools and to have our choice to live in a walkable community with small schools taken away. And that's just fundamentally unfair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fulton.
We have more than paid for our schools, and I just think that they should be returned to us for us and for our future generations to enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Brenda Rackoff?
Good evening.
Good evening.
And you have five minutes as you're speaking for the PTO.
Okay, thank you. Decrepit and a car running on 100,000-mile tires. You all are the only ones who have a problem with our school. Our PTO raised $23,370 this year. We spent $18,400 supporting our teachers, students, and staff, and the year isn't over yet. Beverly Hills STEM participated in the City Nature Challenge and submitted 567 scientific observations. Our students helped Cabarrus County place 16th in the world. Beverly Hills participated in the North Carolina Science Olympiad. Our students placed first, second, or third in six individual events. Our STEM teachers have been implementing the project, they designed, and materials they purchased after being awarded a $45,000 Jimmy Johnson grant. We had students advance to the regional and state science fair. Beverly Hills STEM Elementary was the proud winner of the Air Hugo Dunk Show, a program of the Charlotte Hornets, which is awarded to one school in the Charlotte region. Beverly Hills was the proud winner for logging the most hours reading. Our school and playground does have ADA access. It is not easy, but we make it happen. Are we being punished for doing more with less? It has been very interesting to me as I read about school closures. I only find examples of closures in communities that no one cares about. Closures in communities with dwindling populations and poor achievement, that is not Beverly Hills. We are filled to capacity. Our community is growing. We have a perfectly diverse student body. People are moving into the neighborhood, not out. The city of Concord is investing a community center in our neighborhood. The Greenway is extending into our backyard. Everything I read about communities with school closure is the opposite of Beverly Hills. Our Board of Education has to hold this administration to a high burden of proof. Have they proven to you beyond all reasonable doubt that there is an educational benefit to moving our children out of their neighborhood? Your answer to that question in the past has been no. You built Bethel Elementary in the community. Mount Pleasant Schools were rebuilt in the community, keeping their children at home. Harrisburg, Royal Oaks, and Odell, again, keeping their children in the community. We request the same thing. Our tax dollars have supported growth all over the county. We happily supported it. We continue to pay for other schools but are asked to give up our own. One school every 70 years, that is all we ask. One adequate, energy-efficient building. The infrastructure is in place. It's a great community. You might even bring some charter school families back into the system. The Board of Education has a history of doing the right thing. Our Performance Learning Center is a brand-new facility for about 125 students because it did the right thing for the kids that needed it. The Opportunity School operates for the same reason. The Early College, another example, expensive programs that support a small number of children. You support the IB program at an annual expense for elementary, middle, and high school. Every program has recurring fees every year, and every five years, there's a fee for reevaluation. This year, there will be about 45 graduates, unless we'll receive a diploma. My point is, these are small programs supported by a school district at an expense. You have set the precedent to do the right thing for children in this community when they needed it and where they needed it. It might get a little messy. It will be challenging. It will be time-consuming. It may be expensive. But it is the right time, and it is the right place. It will be worth it to the children and families who call this community their home. Thank you.
Julia Schuman?
Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Education for giving the community another opportunity to discuss the needs of our school system, which includes the future of Beverly Hills Elementary School. For this discussion, I personally wear a variety of hats. I'm a citizen of the Beverly Hills community. I am a taxpayer and an avid voter. But most importantly, I'm a parent advocate who values education for all of our children within our great community. Please do not close Beverly Hills Elementary School. We've heard that Beverly Hills is old. I think the administration uses words like decrepit and beyond its useful life to describe the current state. I think we first need to ask ourselves how we got to the point where one of our facilities is described as decrepit by the very people tasked with taking care of it. We understand that at various times in the past several years, other projects in the county needed attention, and that was fine with the Beverly Hills district. Funds that could have been used to maintain Beverly Hills were needed elsewhere, for projects that were deemed more pressing at the time. And you know what? We in the Beverly Hills community supported that, and we never complained. We value and support education all over the county and not just in our own backyard. And if children in other areas of the county have a more demanding need for facilities, we supported it. When the decision was made that the old Royal Oaks facility needed attention and a bond referendum was added to our ballots, we supported it. We voted for it. We were glad that that community and that school were going to be shown some love because we knew that one day, our patience would pay off, and when it was our turn, our school would also be shown some love. I can tell you that this current discussion is not really what we had in mind. Instead of showing love to Beverly Hills, we are being shown the door. We have supported education throughout the county with our time, our talents, and our taxes, which makes us like shareholders in the school system, and the dividend is the education we get for our children. Closing our school will make us second-guess our past feelings of support and our actions of solidarity. But let's go back to the old building. You know what? A lot of buildings are old, and they're still cherished, protected, and utilized. For example, there's a building called Old East on the campus of my alma mater, the University of North Carolina. It is the oldest state university building in the nation, and except for during two short periods of renovation in the early '20s and in the early '90s, it has been in constant use for more than two centuries and is still in use today. Please work with us to preserve this wonderful treasure today and for future students. I thank you all for your service to our community and for your consideration. Thank you.
Julia Schuman?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Julia Schuman, and I would like to thank the board members for your time this evening as we discuss the very important topic of Beverly Hills Elementary School. I appreciate all the hard work that you do to make sure that the students all around Cabarrus County have access to a high-quality education. I am a graduate of Beverly Hills, and I am now finishing the seventh grade at Concord Middle School. I loved Beverly Hills when I was there, but now that I am in middle school, I love and appreciate Beverly Hills even more. Do you know why? Well, I realize now that Beverly Hills gave me the foundation I need to embrace and love learning and respect learning. I learned to love school and gain the sense of personal responsibility regarding my role in education. I hope that you ask, I hope that if you ask my middle school teachers, they would tell you that I was well-prepared for middle school and beyond, thanks to my time at Beverly Hills. Many days at Beverly Hills, I walked to and from school. When my little sister started school there, we walked together. My little brother is starting kindergarten there in August, and I'm excited that he and my sister will continue the tradition of walking to our neighborhood school. Please don't take that away from them and others. I'm sure that the other elementary schools in Cabarrus County are great, too, but we think our school is very special, and we hope that you do as well. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Julia. And next we have Anna Maria Schuman.
Anna Maria.
Anna Maria, thank you.
Hello. My name is Ani Schuman, and I am a third grader at Beverly Hills Elementary School. I want to thank the members of the Board of Education for allowing me to come back and talk to you again about my awesome school. When I came and spoke to you last time, I was scared. I was nervous to get in front of the board and all the people in the room. I worried you would not like me. I was scared about what you would think about what I had to say about Beverly Hills. But I know, but I knew in my gut that it was the right thing to do. So I took a deep breath, pushed all those scared feelings down, and came and spoke to you. And you know what? I felt so much better after I did it. I was proud of myself for standing up for my school, and so was my family. And you were all very nice to me. I am glad that I did not miss the opportunity of doing something great. My dad always tells me that when there's something wrong about a situation, you will know in your gut. Your gut will tell you when something is right or wrong. Right now, you may also be feeling scared or nervous or anxious because you have a very big decision to make about my school. You may worry about what people will think. You may worry about the money it will take to keep Beverly Hills open. But if you listen to your gut... But if you listen to your gut, you will do the right thing. Keeping Beverly Hills open is the right thing to do. You'll also be glad that you did it and not miss the opportunity of doing something great. And your gut will agree. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Anna Maria. We appreciate hearing from the students. And yes, we all have that knot in our gut right now. And now we have Mr. Lee Schuman.
Nothing like getting upstaged by my whole family. It's probably going to be the worst speech of them all, but I had a speech planned actually tonight for everybody, and I'll probably just end up emailing it to you, but I'm scrapping it. After the presentation that was given tonight that I have been asking for for several days that I didn't receive until ten minutes before I got in here, can't help but have to respond to some of the information that's in there. I'll spend the next week doing the same, but there's some really important points to understand. First and foremost, it was great to see the presentation. I'm wondering why that presentation wasn't made a year ago. Wondering why that presentation wasn't made back when Royal Oaks was discussed as a possible consolidation with Beverly Hills. Would have been appropriate time to have that discussion and have the data so that you could understand what it is that you were voting on when you voted for Royal Oaks to be the size it was. Why are there no repairs done to Beverly Hills? And why do we have a $10.5 million deferred maintenance budget? Well, I think my wife talked about that somewhat here, but that is costs that hasn't been spent at this school over the past two decades. If welfare is so important, as the general statutes say, it is, and as we talk about in this presentation, it seems to me that we would have paid some attention to make the school safer the past two decades. At this point, it's demolition by neglect, and in my opinion, it's dereliction of duty. If you don't do those things and you provide an unsafe environment for children, it's not appropriate. Certainly not appropriate then to turn around and use that against that community as for why their school can't be replaced. Secondly, the transportation costs, there was a lot of discussion earlier about that. The transportation costs are real simple, guys. It's not that hard to understand. Okay? We have six buses at Beverly Hills. Six. Four of them line up before any students or parents get into the line to allow their students to get out of the car. Four of those buses don't come in contact with any cars that come into our school parking lot. So there are two buses in forty-five minutes that have to make their way through a few cars in traffic. Because of the size of that school, there is not an issue with the bus and the school traffic. Secondly, those six buses are fairly full. Those six buses only represent less, they represent less than half of the current population at Beverly Hills. Three point four miles is one thing to understand. It's an over-ten-minute drive. In some cases, it's a fifteen-minute drive. On rush hour traffic at eight o'clock in the morning, I just would ask you to drive that distance. It's not about the mileage, it's about the time. If there are more kids that are going to be riding buses, which I can guarantee there will be if their parents have to drive an extra fifteen minutes in the opposite direction, there's going to be more kids from Beverly Hills riding buses if they go to Royal Oaks. Okay? If you have to maintain the bus ride time, there's going to be less students on those buses. There is only one way to do that. That's more buses, which is more gas, more maintenance, more bus drivers, and more insurance. That's the simple fact. I had this great speech planned. I was going to, you know, talk about this great movie, A Few Good Men. You've probably seen it. And there's that great scene where Jack Nicholson says, "You can't handle the truth." Well, you know what? We can handle the truth. I don't know that there's some people here that can't. But the truth is that this school's been neglected. The truth is, we've been paying taxes for two decades, and all we require is a new school every seventy years. There aren't new roads to be built in Beverly Hills. There isn't new infrastructure. There isn't new police stations or fire stations. We have gladly paid those taxes. We will gladly pay the tax increase. We will not have a single complaint for any money in our neighborhood. But to pay those taxes and then be asked to give up the soul of our community, what we've been built around for sixty years? Unacceptable. Royal Oaks. I like the fact that North Carolina General Statutes was listed in the presentation earlier. That North Carolina General Statute was sent by our group after the last round that we had here. We talked about North Carolina General Statutes because they weren't followed. Okay? When Royal Oaks was replaced, there was not a feasibility study done. I can send around the Fanning Howey Report again. Royal Oaks was graded. It was not in the summary pages, but it was graded. And it was not shown to be replaced. Beverly Hills was shown to be replaced. Now, the decision had already been made to replace Royal Oaks at that point in time. But there should have been a feasibility study done for Royal Oaks, and there was not. That's a problem. The only reason why there's a feasibility study now for Beverly Hills is because we've asked for it. Now, you tell me how in the world we're supposed to sit here today and have this conversation a year and a half after the last fight that we had and since, two years since Royal Oaks has been done, the decision's been made, and have us accept the fact that we're just asking for too much? Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Rod Richardson.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Sergeant Rod Richardson. This is not about your expensive, shiny new school, but that doesn't matter to you. This is about the students of Beverly Hills Elementary. This is about the neighborhood around Beverly Hills Elementary and the negative impact it has. But that doesn't matter to you. This is about the people, the parents, the taxpayers, living in those neighborhoods, and the impact it has on their homes, their businesses, and their lives. But that doesn't matter to you. All that matters to you is that shiny new building out on Dakota Street that no parent in Concord wants to send their child to and the money you spent for that boondoggle. There's one other factor you haven't looked into, one other cost, and that's each and every one of you can be replaced with a new school board.
Ms. Laura, is it?
Guerrero.
Guerrero, thank you.
I'm not Italian, my husband is. Hi, I'm Laura Guerrero. I'm a Beverly Hills community member. As of Thursday, I will have no children left at Beverly Hills. It's been difficult deciding what to say tonight. Numbers and data can be manipulated to make any point feasible, so I'm going to leave all the numbers to other people. I'm just going to ask you, as elected officials, to ask some questions, like, why is Beverly Hills School not included in the Student Realignment Study? If the administration is so confident that the school has run its course and is no longer needed, why not leave it in the discussion for the independent experts to determine? My tax dollars are paying for the study, and yet my school is not even listed as an option when a decision has yet to be made? That seems corrupt. The Student Realignment Study is showing that the next projected growth in our county is actually our Beverly Hills community, downtown Concord, and even Royal Oaks. So I challenge you to think ahead. Use a little forward planning. The fluid ten-year plan seems frozen when discussing Beverly Hills, so maybe that should be revisited. Growth is coming to our area, so having the seats available makes sense. Not to mention, the legislation is not going anywhere. In my neighborhood, we have had three homes sell in the last eight months, and all of them to families with young children. One of them even came from the Northwest School District. We are witnessing the beginning of that transition to growth that the demographers forecasted. Even after losing our magnet status for next year, we are still looking at over four hundred students at Beverly Hills. Concord is the tenth-largest city in North Carolina. We've all heard this. So why are we closing schools? That doesn't make any sense. Bethel, Mount Pleasant, Odell, Royal Oaks, those historic communities all got to keep schools in their areas. My tax dollars were used on all of those new schools, and I'm glad for it. Without our tax dollars from our side of town, you would not have been able to build those schools. Yet, now you are asking me to give up my historic community's school. Last fall, Mr. Schumaker told my neighbor that we just live on the wrong side of town. I find that disrespectful and indefensible as one of your constituents. We love our side of town, and we pay taxes just like everyone else. We should be treated fairly, and our community should not be disregarded. No school has been closed in recent memory. The last was in the seventies, and that community has never recovered. You have Beverly Hills community's attention. Do not close Beverly Hills. Do not let that be your legacy. It cannot be undone. What is the rush? We are a growing community and a thriving county. I urge you to do the right thing and keep this community's school open. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Could you tell me your name, please? Because we thought somebody was going to be late.
Oh, okay. I'm Kathy Sellers Maroney.
Okay. So you are here on time?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that was the first line of my speech. I am Kathy Sellers Maroney. And my address is 577 Amber Gate Place, Northwest Concord, North Carolina, 28027. I have two rising eighth graders at J. and Fries. Also, I am serving on the Student Realignment Study, which first met on May ninth, 2018. I was confused and concerned when I read the background report that kicked off the study. The background report said the realignment would be based on four projects to be completed: New West Cabarrus High School, New Hickory Ridge Elementary School, three, adhere to a ten-year capital plan, specifically the discontinued use of Beverly Hills Elementary School, starting 2019, and four, replace and expand Arbrown McAllister Elementary School with a capacity of 600 to 800, effective 2020. Wait, what? Based on the projects to be completed? I thought the final decision to close Beverly Hills Elementary was postponed. What about Coltrane Web? When was this decided? What happened is that Superintendent Lauter's staff recommendation to close Beverly Hills in the ten-year capital plan became the starting point for the $150,000 study with Cropper GIS. So I asked the consultants, what would happen if there was a vote to keep Beverly Hills open? The consultants said they would readjust their findings at that time, and we would proceed from there. And I said, "Well, the train has already left the station. A readjustment is highly unlikely." There was an article in 2002 entitled Dollars and Cents: The Cost-Effectiveness of Small Schools. Their conclusion speaks directly to our situation, and I have a reference at the end. Many people know intuitively that small schools work best for children and teachers, but now there is research to prove it. Unfortunately, many communities have already lost their good, small schools because they could not argue successfully against educators and policymakers determined to implement economies of scale through consolidation. Now, it is clear that there are significant diseconomies in large facilities and that they do not create the best schools in which to nurture or educate children. It is important to preserve good, small schools and limit school size. Best of all, this report indicates that creating facilities for small schools can be done cost-effectively and that, in fact, the cost of the large schools is higher considering their negative outcomes. I respect the hard work that you, as the Board of Education, does. I ask for three things. One, do not close Beverly Hills. Two, fund a third-party research study that looks at the true cost to renovate Beverly Hills. Three, please redirect Cropper GIS consultants to include Beverly Hills in the realignment study. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have number twelve speaker canceled, so we'll have number thirteen. And Heather, is it Neimer or Nyimer?
Neimer.
Neimer. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Heather Neimer. I am opposed to closing Beverly Hills. I've been a resident of Concord my whole life. I live here, I work here, pay taxes, and vote here. I believe everyone in this room would agree that when we fill out those ballots, we are doing so hoping that the person we are voting for really has the best interest of our city, communities, and families at heart. We elected you because we felt that you could do that. I realize that you have financial responsibilities, but there is a bigger picture. Is there not also responsibility to us, the citizens, who have lived here and paid our taxes, that have gone to fund these new schools and support the growth in our neighboring districts, all the while you let our school rack up all of this deferred maintenance that is now thrown in our face? We deserve to have our school maintained also. You agreed to pay this firm $150,000 to complete a realignment study, but you told them to consider Beverly Hills to be discontinued. Since there has not yet been a vote to determine this, can you honestly say that that was fair? Beverly Hills is a long way from decrepit, years away from the end of its life cycle. Just look at some of the other buildings in Concord. The Old Courthouse, for example, was built in 1876, and it's not fallen in yet. A little TLC can go a long way. Just because it's older does not mean that there's not a place for it in today's time. Beverly Hills community thrives because of our neighborhood school. Cabarrus County School Administration is not looking out for the best interest of our community with the recommendation to close our beloved Beverly Hills. Tonight, I urge you, the board members, please do what's right, make the right decision, be the voice for the people that voted you into your current position, and please vote to keep Beverly Hills open. Thank you for your time.
We have Karen Miller. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Karen Miller. I live on Circle Drive, right behind Beverly Hills School. When the leaves fall, I can see the school. Both my children, who are grown, went to Beverly Hills. My son actually rode his bike. My daughter walked with her friends. My grandson, who lives with me, is looking forward to riding his bike to school. It'd just be a real shame to take that away from our community. A lot of the kids like to walk. A lot of the parents walk their children. You don't get that in big schools. You don't get the personal touch like you do at Beverly Hills, where it's not just great teachers, decent building, good food. But you get the parents. You get all these people behind us. We like our community like it is. We like new neighbors moving in with children. There's two houses beside me for sale. They went up the same day. It's a contest to see which one goes first. But both of those houses have got families with children looking there. The same reason we live here in this community. I'm not from Concord, but my husband was a ravenous Concord person. His name was Lee Miller. And he loved this community. He was on everything you can think of, all these committees. He promoted Cabarrus County with the Chamber. He made me understand what it is to be in a community, what it means to know these people when you see them in the store, to be able to ask them how their family members are, know the teachers, know their families, cheer for everybody at the high school, because you see them from elementary daycare even, all the way through. So what you're doing is you're tearing a community apart. It's not about a building, it's about a community. All these people said the right things. The feasibility study, that you all didn't tell us enough stuff. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves for some of the stuff you've done to us and some of the stuff you've put us through. But our children come first. And I, in my heart, feel like you've already got your decision made, which pisses me off. But I tell you what. We're watching out for you people because you're breaking up our community, and you don't break up Beverly Hills.
Okay. So we'll go to Speaker Seventeen, Jay Meza. Welcome. He just indicated they're not here. To remove them.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Superintendent and all others. Yes, we're back again, and no, we're not leaving, especially me. I am Jay Meza, and yes, I went to Beverly Hills Elementary School. I'm graduating from J. and Fries this week and going to high school. This school is where people took chances on me. They take chances on everyone, and they're not regretting it. They took a chance, and I'm heading in a STEM path, most likely going to Northwest, so Beverly Hills prepared me with that. They planted roots that are still there. I'm here representing the kids and Latino community. The kids because I have the mentality of one. I would like to point out something really quick. We're like the kids in the family. We're like the kids in the family that sometimes, like, never ask for anything, you know? And then when we want something, you know, we can't get it, like, really? So at this point, when we want something, we can't get it. We've been in touch for so long, and now what? We ask for a simple thing, and that's to keep this school. This is an extraordinary school. When we accept someone, we keep them in a bond, and this bond can't be broken. We fight as one, we stand as one, we go down as one, and we stay as one. This bond is stronger than a lot of things. A lot of things. You can't break this bond, period. Why be punishing us for doing more with less? We're extra-packed, and even more people are coming soon and soon. Just like half a year ago, a couple moved right next to us. Pointing something out here. Let's keep this school. It's something simple. It's as simple as asking for, like, a potato chip. We're going to win somehow. We're going to take this victory royale for the boys and girls of Beverly Hills. Thank you.
We have Mrs. Dee Davis.
Hi. First, I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight in support of neighborhood schools. Doing the right thing is what we want our children to learn. It is what we want our leaders to do, and it is what good leaders choose to do. Adults are the examples children follow. You, as elected, an elected school board led by school superintendent, have very important choices to make. Gannott says that children are like wet cement, what falls on them sticks. Please let the decisions you make leave a lasting and positive impression on them. Last year, while in attendance at a school board meeting, I was surprised to hear during the meeting's agenda that the new Royal Oaks Elementary School was over budget. Later, it was learned how grossly over budget and overbuilt the school was. It was even more confusing when almost immediately, following the closed session to discuss those particular budget problems, that decision and the proposal to close Beverly Hills Elementary School was brought to the table. Following, I watched and listened as students, teachers, and community leaders poured out their heart and soul to the superintendent and board members in support of keeping their neighborhood school. I would like to remind you that during capping, new students moving to this area were bused to specific schools to save money on busing. I watched as students moved to a school out of their neighborhood and school district. I saw discipline problems increase on buses and at the school level. It was a disjointed and fractured solution to a problem that was based on data, not what was best for the students. It may have saved money, but was it worth the lives it affected? The students who never bonded? The students who stopped blooming? Or the students who withdrew into a shell because they felt out of place? There is no amount of money that can justify not doing what is right for a child. If you want to know what impact you are having on individual students, let me share a personal experience with you. Years ago, my nephew attended Beverly Hills Elementary School. Because of a career move by his parents, my nephew had to change schools. Years later, I shared with him that I had seen the mother of one of his good friends from Beverly Hills. What I heard next stopped me in my tracks and broke my heart. His comment was, "Timothy was my best friend. I never had a best friend after that." Sometimes, when you look at statistics and data to support a decision, you forget who the decisions affect. You forget the child, the student, the young adult, the community leader they may become. Somehow, what is right gets lost in the equation. I ask you, as a board representing Cabarrus County Schools, to choose what is right, to humanize the child, excuse me, to make the right decision. You have the power to influence the lives of students at Beverly Hills Elementary School in a positive manner. I trust you make the right decision in support of neighborhood schools and Cabarrus County School rather than look for more data to support the decision to close Beverly Hills because of them state made at Royal Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. And we have Camille Luther Pittman.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, welcome.
Hi, my name is Camille Luther Pittman. I'm a parent of a first grader at Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School. Please do not take away the wonderful education my child has received at Beverly Hills STEM Elementary. We all must make the choice between what is right and what is easy. Beverly Hills, please keep it open. Thank you.
We have Mrs. Keisha Sandage. Welcome.
We meet again, ladies and gentlemen. How are y'all doing? So, what if I told you today would be the last day that you could shop at your favorite grocery store, whether that be Food Lion, Harris Cheater, Publix, and you had to go to Walmart? How would you feel? Big old Walmart compared to your small, little Food Lion or your Publix? Well, that's what you're telling these kids. How do you feel about that? So, let me tell you why you guys should save this school. We have a five-year-old attending a school in Rowan County. Every day, screaming under the table, kicking, pushing people that don't belong in their way. And then that parent getting a call almost every day when that kid is doing that to change schools and come to Cabarrus County Schools and go to Beverly Hills, no less. And all those behaviors stop. I wonder why? Can anybody answer that question for me?
Because the right school.
Because he was at the right school in the right community. Well, guess what? Last week, I dropped that kid off at college. And he's going to be on TV every Saturday, where we can all watch him play. And he can come back and give back to this community because of Beverly Hills. Wow. That's why you guys should save this school. Thank you.
We have Carolyn Kegel.
Yes.
Welcome.
Hello. I don't really have a lot prepared. I've already spoken, like, twice, I think. My children came to speak. So I've had three kids at Beverly Hills. What I wanted to say when I was listening to some of the people talk is that my youngest son attended Coltron Web. No, sorry, he went to Beverly Hills in kindergarten. And then when the STEM program opened up at Coltron Web, he went over to Coltron Web. And the three years he was at Coltron Web, it was very nice, but it was never the same as being at Beverly Hills. And we felt that every day, because when he came back to Beverly Hills, when y'all made it a STEM program again, he can ride his bike over to his friend's house from, you know, like, his classmates can just walk over to the house. Luke Guerrero, Laura Guerrero's son, lives right behind us. He can just walk up the hill to visit if he wants to. And we never had that connect, you know? Even though Coltron Web is an amazing school, and it would be great for the people who live there, but it's not Beverly Hills community. So that was one point that was different when you move your kid over to another school that is not in your community. The second thing was, someone said something about kids being able to go back and visit the school and serve there, teach there, become the principal, whatever. So my oldest son, he is in high school right now. He's a rising senior. And every Friday, every Friday, he goes back to Beverly Hills, and he serves as a mass superstar And he works with all those little boys and girls that are in his former school, you know? And he goes there, and he sees some of his old teachers. And you can't get that if the school's no longer there. And the other thing, somebody said about all these awards that we won at the school, I think they forgot to mention that we also got second in the fire life safety. And that is the only Cabarrus County school that made it to, I think, to the state. So, woo-woo. Please think about it, really, really think about it. Imagine if your kid was at this school or your grandchild was at this school. Maybe it would be totally different how you would think, you know? But you got to do what you got to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Cox. Welcome.
I am a retired teacher of the Cabarrus County School System. Both of my children attended Beverly Hills School, and I support keeping it open, as well as other neighborhood schools. My son and his wife currently live in the Beverly Hills community and are expecting their first child in January. One of the primary reasons they purchased this property was so that their children would be able to attend Beverly Hills, a neighborhood school. If that does not become the case, they will be looking at alternative education resources for this child and their future children. I'm not going to repeat all the positive appeals for the Beverly Hills remaining open that has already been stated. I would just like to shed some light on another issue that I do not know if the school system has studied or addressed. Ms. Carpenter, you alluded to it, and that is the traffic nightmare trying to cross South Cannon Boulevard or Highway 29 during heavy traffic periods. I currently live in Kannapolis, so I am very familiar with the traffic conditions on Highway 29 and the problems trying to cross the highway. The most direct route is Mount Olivet Road, which is backed up on both sides of the road all during the afternoon. The current traffic-like pattern does not lend itself to a smooth flow, and I have witnessed several accidents at the intersection of 29 and Mount Olivet. The turn lane to get onto Dakota Street, which is where Royal Oaks is located, gets backed up, and that is the problem of cars on the other side trying to feed onto 29, especially if they are making a left turn. There is no traffic light at the end of Dakota, so when traffic is especially heavy, it is very difficult. Whenever there is a backup on I-85, Highway 29 is the alternative route in that area, and it gets bumper to bumper. Cutting through the Royal Oaks community is a problem because it is a high residential area with narrow streets, and there is only one major outlet to Lake Concord Road, and that is Mount Olivet. When the traffic is so backed up on Mount Olivet, cars cannot get out at the intersection of Mount Olivet and revert to Pennsylvania, that is another dangerous intersection. The intersection of Dale Earnhardt and Highway 29 is also another extremely high congestion area, so it is not a good alternative either. All the congestion around the mall area and Copperfield Boulevard on this side of the interstate is a huge concern. I know you're thinking that all these students can just ride the bus, but you know as well as I do that many, many parents will always drive their children to school. Royal Oaks has been closed for the past two years, and this is the current conditions that I experience right now with Royal Oaks not even being open. Would you want your children going to a highly accessible community school or one on the other side of a busy highway?
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Okay, next, we have Liz Gray. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, guys. Good evening. My name is Liz Gray. For some of you that don't know who I am, I currently have two children in the Cabarrus County Schools. Logan, 13, who is anxiously sitting back there. He's currently attending Concord Middle. And Liam, who is a rising fourth grader at Arbrown McAllister. Logan attended Beverly Hills for six years, and it was a very special place for our family. There's many reasons why so many of us are here today, and that is to save our schools. For obvious reasons, I'm here to talk about the closing of Beverly Hills Elementary and the possible changes at Arbrown McAllister. I'm a firm believer in economic development. I'm a taxpayer in Cabarrus County, and on many levels, I pay your salaries for any changes that the school board makes in regards to our children. Growth is vital to many rural communities across America, which we're experiencing right here in Cabarrus County. I understand the need for growth, and I love to watch it flourish in my hometown. But to change something that has worked for so many years is not the route to go. Our schools work. They are diverse, stable, and parents and students have proven to be more engaged. Our schools are generational. I've even met some of the students who have returned to teach at some of our local elementary schools. There are many reasons why you should leave what has worked for so many years in our community alone. Money is the main reason in your eyes. Ooh, I lost my place. Not the kids. You think that you'll be saving money by closing and changing what works. I've looked at the numbers, well, what was available to me before I came to this meeting and saw more information tonight. So my speech has changed a little bit. I've spoken to people in my neighborhood whose properties are at stake by the changes that may occur. Leave them alone. Bullying never got anyone anywhere. This is what we teach our kids, right? Not to bully. What example are we setting for our youth? By bulldozing their futures and all that they have known by using our neighborhood schools. Our current neighborhood schools are in despair, but they are fixable. If we are growing so much, then we can afford to just build a new school. I pay a lot of money for my current home, where I've been living for the past years. The number one reason why I bought the home where I'm currently living is because of the school district that it was in. I'm sure that many other parents can say the same in this room that are here. The kids that attend these schools feel like they're in touch with their neighborhood. My kids can freely roam my neighborhood to and from their school, and it's safe. I don't think that that will be possible for the rest of the kids that are at Beverly Hills Elementary. I'm going to wrap this up real quick. So I'm going to ask you to quit torturing all the parents in here. Please, make a wise decision when you're voting, because we do vote, and a lot of you are up for reelection. So keep that in mind. It's really important that you listen to everybody that's here tonight and make the correct decision for our community. Thank you.
Jamie, is it Benyon?
Yes.
Okay, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Just wanted to talk, I have four boys, three who currently go to Beverly Hills Elementary School. And we are in the neighborhood where we can walk to school. And it has been shown that stimulation for boys in particular is good for the brains, gets the brains moving and helps them learn. And as of right now, recess is either limited or pushed to the end of the day, and they're forced to sit in class, sit in class, without moving, jittery, getting around too much. PE is on a rotating schedule versus every day as it was when I used to go to school. And if these boys and kids don't sit in the classrooms, then they are diagnosed as ADHD, ADD, and given medication for them to help sit down and focus. Now, you're asking the kids, my kids, that we currently walk to school, to sit on a bus or a car for 20 minutes, and then sit again for another remainder of their school day until they get their PE once every seven days, I believe, or recess, maybe at the end of the school year, at the end of the school day, maybe in the middle, maybe after lunch. And again, if they're not sitting, then they're diagnosed as possibly having some kind of behavior issues or ADHD, ADD. More kids nowadays are being medicated versus figuring out what the problem is and changing it by diet, by exercise. Or maybe they're just being boys, and they need that stimulation. They need to get out and move and be active. They need that hands-on. Then Big Pharma is ready to give them pill. It's an easy, quick, easy, quick and easy fix versus taking the time and effort to address the problem. So I just wanted to say, please, just let us continue to walk to school so I don't have to medicate all my kids as kids think, as parents think, as teachers think that all kids need to be sitting still. Thank you.
Okay, so 25 had previously canceled, and 26 is not here either. Okay, 27, Chris Hughes.
My name is Chris Hughes. I reside on Palisade Drive, a street that hosts two special places for Concord. One is, it's the host of the staging area for the Thanksgiving Day Parade, or Thanksgiving Parade. And the other is, it's the home just at two blocks from my house, of Beverly Hills Elementary. I have two children, neither of which attended Beverly Hills Elementary because we didn't move here until five years ago. But we are part of Beverly Hills. We're part of the community. There's two things that I can hear every afternoon from the front porch of my house. The children laughing and playing at Beverly Hills Elementary and the bells of Edward. United Methodist Church. It makes Beverly Hills, Beverly Hills. Critical component of community, of any community, is the common spaces that are part of that community. For 60 years, Beverly Hills Elementary has served as that common space, a space where children make friends, where teachers build lives, where parents meet each other, and community is formed. To close Beverly Hills Elementary is to, as someone else said today, is to cut out the heart of the community. When we close neighborhood schools, studies have shown over and over again that when neighborhood schools are closed, property values go down. If Beverly Hills is eventually closed, the property values of my property and my neighbor's property goes down, and the taxes collected from our property goes down, and the budget of the school board, of our school system, goes down. I'm asking that instead, that you remember the heart of the community that keeps a community together, and it also makes good fiscal sense because it keeps property values up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Becky Hughes. First of all, thank you for inviting us or allowing us to speak today. As my husband said, we moved here five years ago, and I just wanted to tell you a little bit. My husband got transferred here. He grew up in the Charlotte area, but we came from Arlington, Texas. So, when we came, I pronounced it Concord. I quickly learned the difference, and I was looking around, really, the slate was clean as far as where we wanted to live. I was thinking about Charlotte, but Chris's job was in Concord, so I thought, I think we should support the city where the job is. So, that's why we decided to look around Concord, and I had no preconceived ideas. I had no friends here, didn't know anybody from Adam. Well, we looked into the Beverly Hills area, and the thing that sold me on our house was that we had a school, not only in our neighborhood, but way down our street. We had a park two blocks away, and it hasn't failed to disappear, disappoint me. We have a church across the street from us. All of that was wonderful for me. Well, I know of one, a couple doors down across the street, that bought their house because they wanted their kids to go to Beverly Hills, because not only did they go to Beverly Hills, but so did their parents, or the kids' grandparents, and they wanted to continue the tradition, and they just bought their house, and they're in like first and second grade. Then, we have three houses. Of those three houses, two of them were single occupant people that passed away by the time I moved here, and one of them, he moved. And I've seen people regularly looking at the houses. We have a big front window, and all the people that are looking are young families or young people, and I've seen a lot of kids going in and out of the houses, looking at them. We're not gentrifying as a neighborhood because it keeps flipping, and I just want you to know that in our, in Beverly Hills, what I've seen, and I've heard at least two or three other speakers, talk about people coming in and moving here. Please, please, keep Beverly Hills, because we want to keep growing, we want to stay a young, or the ability to be a young neighborhood. So, I'm just asking you kindly, please, keep Beverly Hills open. I'm counting on y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so 29 is not here. Next, we have John Howard. Welcome.
Thank you, Cabarrus County School Board, for allowing me to speak to you tonight about Beverly Hills Elementary School. My name's John Howard. My wife and I live in Oak Leaf condos, and I'm 75 years old. I share that with you because I want you to know that in 1955, my mother, father, sister, and I lived on Wilmar, and my friends that we played with were getting ready to go to a new school. That new school was Beverly Hills, and we were going to be in the sixth grade. We were going to be top dogs down at that new school. Our teacher was Mr. Freeze. Our principal was Mr. Freeze, and we operated the school store, and we also worked as the receptionist for our principal. My parents supported that school, and I want to move forward a little bit and let you know that later in life, my wife and I and our two children lived on Arbor Street in a home that my father purchased in 1940. My son Jay and my daughter Sissy attended Beverly Hills Elementary School. There were five years difference in their age, so my wife and I had the privilege of supporting that school for 11 years. They walked down Central Drive, went by Joe Probst's backyard, jumped across a little old creek, but not always, and they got to Beverly Hills School. I share that with you to let you know the depth of appreciation and concern that I have for this school, just as all of these people that sit behind me and have been up here and brought all kind of factual information to you. I have no PowerPoint to display to give you mathematical reasons why that school should be taken away, but I can tell you from my heart, in the heart of the people that are standing back here, and from the conscience of all of these people, that you shouldn't do that. Beverly Hills is part of the fabric of the greater Wilmar Park area, and just like an old chair in your home that's beautiful and has been worn, that's kind of the way Beverly Hills is right now. But you know, an old chair, an old bench, has great character. It has great bones, and it's very easy to take that piece of furniture that has a use for you, your children, and your children's children, and take it and have it reupholstered and give it new life, new life for new people. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I am Andrea Burlison. Brief moment to read here. The current Cabarrus County School Strategic Plan states different goals that it has in place, and under those goals, it has objectives of how to obtain those goals. And Goal Number Four reads that Cabarrus County Schools has effective and efficient financial facility and technology systems, as well as community partnerships to serve its students, parents, and educators. Objective 4.2, under this goal, states that increased number of student seats to meet growth in our community. So, this is a way that we plan to support Goal Number Four. As Mr. Parker stated, growth is here, and so it seems counterintuitive to this objective to eliminate a school if we're trying to increase seats. Objective 4.3 states that you want to increase professional, community, and parental partnerships. Well, I don't think I need to say much more about how removing Beverly Hills is going to be effective with the community partnership, but personally, from a parental partnership, it's effective. I have four boys, two of which who currently attend Beverly Hills, and for me to envision myself going any more distance to try and have a parental relationship with the school, to volunteer, to eat lunch with my boys, it will be a strain. I work within a mile of the school, and obviously, I live within the school district, so it's very important to me that the school stay exactly where it is so that my involvement can be there. So, if the school is closed, then again, it seems to be in opposition of an objective to meet a goal that is currently in the Cabarrus County School Strategic Plan. I don't know if any of you have had the privilege to ride through the neighborhood. There are many people who aren't here, who have signs up in their yard and hoping to make a statement to please save our school, not only because they have children who go to that school, but because the value of what taking a school out of community does to the properties that are there. I don't know if any of you have ventured off into other counties, but I recently was in East Spencer. The Dunbar Center that is there was a thriving school at one time. The community was great, but to look at that place now, it is impoverished, and it does not look what it was the day the school was there. You know the effects of what it is that your decision will weigh. I want you to envision like throwing a stone into a pond, what happens. For every action, there is reaction. Just as you picture that stone going into the water, yes, that was a today thing that you did. It was a moment, but the ripples still take place. The ripple of what it is that your decision is, is going to have lasting effect. Thank you for keeping Beverly Hills.
Mr. Bob Cole?
Yes, hi. I was blessed to move to Concord 35 years ago and had two children go to Beverly Hills School, but as you can tell from my accent, I'm not from North Carolina. I was raised on the island of Maui in the Hawaiian Islands, and I had a grandfather who was uneducated, but one of the smartest men I ever met. I asked him when I was 10 years old, or he asked me when I was 10 years old, "What do you want to be, Bobby?" And I said, "I want to be what makes you the proudest." And he said, "The only thing I ask of you is to be a man of honor." And I've tried to live that in my whole life. I went in the Marine Corps, served in Vietnam, and you know, simple fidelity, always faithful, live with honor. I was blessed to be a teacher at Concord High School. I was a coach, and I tried to live these dreams. We have to save Beverly Hills. You all are in a great, responsible position. You chose to run, and you were elected, and congratulations on that, but you have grave responsibilities. And I'm not talking statistics. I'm not talking numbers. I'm talking about these areas outside of these things. What drew our children to Beverly Hills? What draws, and that's bad English, but people to Cabarrus County? This school, as someone mentioned before, is the soul of, it is a school of honor. You're in a position that dictates and demands you being honorable. You have to stand up for causes sometimes that are not shown on a computer, are not numbers to be read, but the time has come for each and every one of you to look inside of yourself and be people of honor. Thank you.
Thank you. And you would think I'd remember how to say your name. Is it Bruncha?
Bruncha, good, yes, Bruncha Chalfont.
Welcome.
When moving here 45 years ago, the schools were not yet consolidated. There were no public kindergartens, and almost any road would pass by farms that had been in families for generations. Those same farms, particularly on the western part of our county, no longer raise crops, but sprout housing developments and apartment complexes with a demand for more schools, more expensive transportation, and new roads. We have not voiced objections to our taxed dollars constantly being funneled to these new areas of massive growth because the need is there, but we have voted for every school bond in the belief that our existing schools would be well-supported, well-cared-for, and protected from destruction. Please remember the old playground mandate that says, "We must share and share alike." Beverly Hills has not gotten its fair share. I must mention again, your superintendent has publicly stated that Beverly Hills is decrepit. I have seen schools in Washington and New Orleans that would make Beverly Hills look like a palace, but five-to-10-year-old children do not need a palace. They need safety, security, and comfort in their environment. They do not need a nearly 30-foot entry atrium that stands as a monument to the waste of our limited resources. We have repeatedly been told that the routine maintenance left undone at Beverly Hills is deferred maintenance, and upon that peg, you are asked to close a beloved and historic school. Why was work not done when it should have been, and who is responsible for this dereliction of duty? Why destroy a school precious to the city core and its families? Why have the alternatives to keeping Beverly Hills functional not been fully explored? There is room to expand if necessary, but with Royal Oaks having such a large seating capacity, our student population would remain fairly static. Please do not disregard the significant numbers that others have presented to you which illustrate the potential financial and civic fallout from closing Beverly Hills. As board members, you have a unique opportunity to make an incredible difference in people's lives and to have a lasting impact on our county, to swim upstream, as it were, to refute the status quo that says bigger is better, and to prove that you are indeed supportive of all of your constituents' needs. Urban sprawl does take its toll on all our infrastructures, but cities, both large and small, have always cared enough to respect and to salvage their beginnings. Please allow this slice of our history to remain, and by choosing to sustain Beverly Hills, you will have chosen to protect our children. It is within your power to create a legacy, a legacy of excellent stewardship. Unlike the story of Rumpelstiltskin, we cannot give you our firstborn children, but we have given you, each of you, what's in our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number 34 is not here, so we'll go to 35. Joni Lebel.
Hi, good evening. My name's Joni Lebel, and I thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I'm a 30-year neighbor of Beverly Hills Elementary School. My daughters graduated from Beverly Hills Elementary School, and I had sent everybody an email with some of my concerns, but I just wanted to reiterate a few of them tonight. I'm asking you to keep Beverly Hills open as a viable elementary school, as a viable neighborhood elementary school. Point one, have you truly considered the value of preserving an existing neighborhood school with strong support? The citizens of Beverly Hills and the city of Concord have shared their concerns about what happens to a community when a school closes. As Scott Paget mentioned in the previous meeting, the communities surrounding Logan and Long schools have failed to recover following the closing of these schools. The former president of National Association of Elementary School Principals stated, "You take out the school, and that's the beginning of the decline of the neighborhood. You've got to have a school to have a neighborhood." Schools are part of the anchor that holds communities together. The school introduces people who would not otherwise, who would otherwise remain strangers to each other. It helps build a sense of community, which is central to solving some of society's bigger challenges, education included. The second point, we talked about the feasibility study that was done in-house. The National Trust of Historic Preservation recommends that feasibility studies be performed comparing the cost of new schools with those of renovating existing schools before new schools are built and existing ones abandoned. They recommend hiring architects with experience in rehabilitation work to conduct these studies. These studies would also consider the impact of a school's closing on existing neighborhoods, long-term transportation costs, and municipal service burdens. You have a tough decision ahead of you, and again, I ask that you consider keeping Beverly Hills open as a viable neighborhood elementary school. Thank you.
Test board, welcome.
It is a fact that small schools help students achieve. It is a fact that small schools save money. It is the fact that students that come from economically disadvantaged backgrounds interelementary school already significantly behind their economically advantaged peers. These are facts that cannot be ignored and the research done in large-scale scientific studies proves it. Two separate studies done by national researchers at major universities found that smaller schools make the difference in helping students achieve. And not only that, but smaller schools are crucial for students that come from poorer backgrounds, i.e. Title I schools. An article referencing these two studies wrote, creating a better school may be as simple as creating a smaller one. Separate studies credit small schools with reducing the negative effects of poverty on student achievement, reducing student violence, increasing parent involvement and making students feel accountable for their behavior in grades. Why is this relevant to us here tonight and relevant to the city of Concord as a whole? Because you are on a dangerous path with many repercussions. If you vote to close or consolidate Beverly Hills, you are not only ignoring and potentially destroying a thriving community that revolves around this school, but you are setting a precedence throughout the county. Which small neighborhood Title I school is next? These schools are on the front line, helping the students in our community that are most in need. If you move these students from a small culturally diverse neighborhood elementary school to a larger faceless school of over 600 students, you're putting them in harm's way. The larger the school, the more power you give poverty and our students will bear the brunt of your decisions. Researchers found that smaller schools cut poverty's power rating by between 20 and 70%, usually by 30 to 50% depending on grade level. Why did you run for school board? You are here to be the checks and balance to protect the needs of the community, the parents, the students and the teachers, but your number one responsibility is to the students. And if you vote to close Beverly Hills, you are failing them. If you choose to change what has already brought people to Concord in the first place by abandoning our traditional schools that were already in place, you are hurting the very students you were elected to protect. Please hear us. No more patting members of this community on the head and ignoring our pleas. We have been told that it's too expensive to keep these schools open, but you will end up spending more money by having to bus more students. And by increasing the size of elementary schools, you will increase the cost of intervention spent over the lifetime of the students when you don't solve their educational issues in elementary school. This board has spent money left and right. $150,000 was spent to pass the buck to an outside firm to handle redistricting so you won't have to feel uncomfortable when you pass this in the street. What could we have done with that money for our students? Maybe my children at Culture and Web wouldn't have to lose their excellent music program that is going to be slashed in half due to lack of funds. Please, no more doubling down and throwing more money at mistakes that were made like building schools that were too large or having to pay for dirt on land that you bought to build a school that was not suitable for building. This board approved a request for $860,000 from the county for unsuitable soil. Not only that, but you have pitted parents and community members against one another by cherry picking what schools you support. Here's the secret, every child deserves the right to a small neighborhood school that will get to know their family and meet their individual needs. We have been given a gift in Concord's small schools and we should be looking to emulate them in the future, not destroy them and move to a model of public education that has been proven time again to be a catastrophic mistake. Do the right thing, listen to your fellow community members, listen to the children and the parents, listen to the facts, keep our schools small and keep Beverly Hills open. Thank you very much.
So 37 is not here, we'll now have Melissa Goldar, welcome.
Thank you for listening. I'm sure you're tired. I'm tired. It's exhausting to think almost every day for eight months about what losing our elementary school would mean for my family and for these incredible neighbors that are here tonight. I'm tired of worrying about losing my American dream, the dream of building security through home ownership in a stable neighborhood and walking to school with my kids and chatting with neighbors along the way. I see glimmers of my American dream when we walk by the school and my four-year-old says, mommy, that's going to be my school. I'm tired because I stay awake at night and I wonder, I wonder whether the subjective charts and tables will win or whether an understanding will prevail that, as a wise woman in this room once told me, a school is so much more than a building. I wonder if this board will facilitate prosperity or will act in a way that devalues community in a very significant way. I wonder if you worry about then losing students and their related per pupil funding to charter schools or perhaps municipal schools as House Bill 514 has advanced. I wonder if you can understand the feeling of hearing that everyone else gets a new school but you. I wonder how many of you would appreciate being discontinued when you turn 65? I wonder if this group is able to admit the bias we all have, yet strive to make an objective decision. Mr. Harrison, I appreciated your question regarding peer review earlier and I hope you push the staff for a better answer than the one that was given. We heard earlier that numbers support closure, however many aspects of the cropper study that I saw support keeping the school open. And I have a handout for you in that regard. I'll hand to you when I'm done. The most notable finding maybe that I saw was that Beverly Hills is the only elementary zone in the district showing population growth to 2025. If you look at the study, it's incredible how Beverly Hills sticks out as being just solid or growing compared to a lot of other schools that are decreasing actually in size over time as projected by the demographic firm that the district has paid. So yes, we're all tired, but you must find the spirit to do the right thing. This can be a win-win. The first and last pages of your 10-year plan ensure that it's only a snapshot of options, let's quote. There is room to change it, but it takes courage to deviate from what is being pushed as the only way. Life is full of complex decisions and you, good people, have chosen a position where you have to make more of those than the average person. Usually decisions aren't black and white, but in this case it is, it's yes or no. You will side with the destructive or you will side with the constructive. You will build or you will destroy. If the school closes, the neighborhood and especially its children will be grieving a loss. We all agree there's too much grief in American schools today, but in this case it is avoidable. As Ms. Carpenter said in your last meeting, you all have one vote. Vote no to closure and then we can all get some rest.
Okay, our next speaker is Nancy Freesfager, welcome.
It's time to take a deep breath, delay the decision of closing Beverly Hills Elementary School and sit down with other stakeholders, including our city leaders, property owners, business owners and other community service providers. The proposed state budget provides the city an opportunity to participate in school funding. Why not bring them into the conversation? Personally, I'd like to see the rebirth of Concord continue. We are resilient and we have overcome many bumps in the road. Citizens of Concord want neighborhood schools to be part of the equation, so I ask you to consider, number one, data can be flawed. In 1988, demographic consultants did not project a lot of school age growth in the county. My father, former superintendent Dr. Joe Fries, was puzzled because he felt experts underestimated future growth. Number two, we can study other data on the new community school movement, which shows the benefits of neighborhood schools. And that's where common sense factors into the equation. An article in the Wall Street Journal over the weekend discusses the overprotected American child and I quote, why not let them walk to school alone? Parents and communities are figuring out ways to give their children more independence and it just may help them become less anxious, more self-reliant adults. The city of Concord builds greenways to promote walking. The Cabarrus Health Alliance promotes good health by encouraging people to walk. Let's be healthy. It's all about quality of life, physically, emotionally and economically. The best decision tonight is no decision, followed by a strategy that is inclusive of all parties affected by the closing of a school. Please have an open mind. Good research is coming out in support of neighborhood schools. Would it be possible to study this data and its impact on the students? It's a terrible thing when a school closes. It provides so many services to the community and is a place where community partnerships and innovation happen. Please consider our concerns, consider the positive impacts that neighborhood schools have on student outcomes. Your decision will affect and impact lives for years to come. Neighborhood schools have benefits that other programs do not offer and a lot of great people are a product of Beverly Hills Elementary School. In closing, I'd just like to share that I love the sounds of the neighborhood, the children playing, the chatter while they walk to school. At the end of life, at the end of my parents' life, they would sit on the back porch and they would hear the children at recess while they were playing outside. On mother's deathbed, she heard the children playing. As the hospice nurse asked, what time is school dismissed? Mother's eyes and ears perked up and hearing the children in the background, her soul was dismissed to heaven. Please don't take away the life of Beverly Hills School.
Next we have Victor Gomez.
Hello. My name is Victor Gomez. I'm at 179 Scenic Drive. When I first moved to Beverly Hills 23 years ago, it's ironic that I'm following Nancy because I moved right across the street from her and her dad lived right next door. I didn't know who they were, I just knew that they were my neighbors and they were always friendly. As I look around the room tonight, I see all my neighbors and friends. I see children that are here tonight that are spoke, that walk to school. I see them as I drive to work and I see them walking to school. The city has passed more sidewalks in our neighborhood. Construction has not begun, but as you know, the DOT takes time. But we're getting more sidewalks. Beverly Hills is a walkable neighborhood. People drive to Beverly Hills, park their cars and walk our neighborhood. That's a fact. I travel all over this country. I recently got back from San Francisco, working in the financial district, seeing people on the streets of San Francisco and the shape that they're in. And I was glad to be driving back on 85 when I got back and I said, this is home. This is home because I've lived here and raised my family here for 23 years. I'm the president of the Neighborhood Association. I'm a vice president of a company. I travel all over the country and work for a large financial firm. The one thing, I didn't want to bring up numbers, but the one thing that stood out tonight was the $10.3 million to maintain the building. It's who said, we fell way behind in maintenance and that really shocked me because if somebody in the business world said, we have $10.3 million of back orders, somebody's going to get in trouble. And I don't know who's responsible for that, but if there's other schools with that backlog, somebody better do some checks and balances because that really caught my eye. And I'm not a big numbers guy, but I sit in a lot of construction meetings and if somebody is sitting in a construction meeting and brings a number like that, it's going to get somebody's attention. Thank you.
Kimberly, Kimberly Hunter, welcome.
My name is Kimberly Hunter. I'm an almost 20-year resident of Cabarrus County. I moved here to leave Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. I'm a mom, a lifelong advocate for education and access for all, and I'm a voter. The main draw for us moving to Cabarrus County was the school system. I had no idea when I moved to Concord that I would be at so many schools, but here's my history. Two children. My first son, who's now an adult, went to Wolf Meadow. Then he went to J and Fries before STEM, then James Robinson for a year when Hickory Ridge opened. And so then he moved to Hickory Ridge and was the second graduating class at Hickory Ridge. Meantime, I have a daughter who started out at Pitt School Elementary and went all the way through. She's the only one in our family to stay in one school. She then went to the J and Fries STEM program and she's now a proud student at Northwest Cabarrus STEM. My husband and I and my daughter now live in my dream neighborhood, finally, this is the neighborhood I wanted to live in all those years ago, but as a young mom, young husband, we couldn't afford it at the time. So now we're in a dream neighborhood. We are in the McAllister School District, Concord Middle and Concord High. And again, she doesn't go to Concord High because she's in that STEM program at Northwest. While my daughter was at Pitt School, she was really excited to move to that neighborhood and she wanted me to, she wanted to go to school. She wanted to walk, to ride her bike. We tried it a couple of times. It's very dangerous, there's no sidewalks. There was speeding cars, it was not a neighborhood school. Even though we were close, it was just not feasible for her. When we had the opportunity to move, we did, even though it wasn't impacting her, but I could see the value in the neighborhood school and I remembered how much I liked that downtown area, so we bought our house. So I'm here today speaking to you as a concerned voter who loves Concord, who loves Cabarrus County. As a homeowner, I'm here because I'm concerned about my home's value. The reason we are in this area is because of the schools. As a constituent, it seems to me that there's two governing bodies of the area that I live in and it seems like you guys are in conflict with each other. Those two areas are the Cabarrus County School Board and the City of Concord. The City of Concord is promoting Concord as a family-friendly environment. The school board, by closing neighborhood schools, is in direct opposition of that. You can tell by everybody here, we want our neighborhood schools. So I want you to keep the schools open. The voters from all over the county are going to be watching. Again, I have no bone in this fight besides owning a house at McAllister, which isn't currently on your list. More importantly, my daughter's going to be watching, my son's going to be watching. They want neighborhood schools. All these kids that are growing up in Beverly Hills are going to be wanting neighborhood schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Burpo and I am a fourth grade, going into fifth grade student at Beverly Hills. I'm glad to be here and talk about why I love the school. So I'm going to get started. First up, all my friends at Beverly Hills love our school so much, that's almost like there are these pathways that connect our bond to the school. And nothing gets in the way of those paths. And those paths tell us that we're home and this is where we belong. And to me, we don't need to be going to a fine arts school that's twice the size of the school we have. To me, the only thing we need is people who work together to care for us and teach us everything we need for the future. One more thing is that me and my friends didn't know that our school was old or different until the board and everyone started mentioning it. And to me, I don't think it's really a, if you look at it from the outside, it's old. But what you need to look at is the inside of the school. And if you look on the inside, you can see new people who make new friends, learn new things and all make new memories at that place. I'm glad to be here and I hope you think about what we're saying and thank you. And thank you.
Thank you. We do enjoy hearing from the youngsters. Terry Smith?
Hi, my name is Terry Smith and thank you, Board, for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a nearly 20-year resident of the City of Concord. My children have been in the Cabarrus County Schools for nearly a decade. My home school is Arbrown-McAllister. And so in some ways, you know, why would I even care? You know, my kids are in middle school, about to go to high school. Why would I even care about Beverly Hills? You know, I live on South Union. I mean, I should really care more about Arbrown. Well, I do care about Arbrown. I care about Coltrane Webb because I feel like whatever happens in Beverly Hills will impact those schools. 20 years ago, when I got out of residency and moved back to North Carolina to get a job at what is now Atrium Health Northeast, I was a single person, not married, no children, but I knew how important it was to live in a neighborhood that had a community school. And that's why I specifically looked in the downtown Concord area. And I found my home on South Union Street where I've been there for nearly 20 years. There is so much value in community schools, small community schools, that, you know, are intangible. And as a pediatrician, I really understand what the social determinants of health are. And that's a big buzzword, buzzwords, I should say, in the medical community. It's kind of, it kind of grew in the early 2000s, but what we're finding out is that how communities impact our children and how they can flourish as a result of what these determinants are. And one of the things that they have found is, they've done all these studies on adults, but they're finding it that really what we need to do is look at what's happening with our children and especially early childhood and how education impacts those children. And so I find that when you consolidate schools and have these mega schools, that children tend to get lost in the shuffle. They fall through the cracks and they don't, people don't address those social determinants of health. And in my job, you know, I see a child, I see children every day and of course, I worried about that child, but I'm worried about their parents. I'm worried about their siblings. I'm worried about the children they'll have. And so I think it's really important to think not just what's going to happen in the next five years or the next 10 years, but to think about what's going to happen in the next several generations, just like the Board of Education did 70 years ago when they opened up Beverly Hills Elementary School. Thank you so much for this opportunity and please, please do not close the school.
Yes, I'm Lydia Cruz. I have children that went to Beverly Hills and grandchildren that went to Beverly Hills and I love that school. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I know that you have hard decisions to make and that's what you're elected for. But when you take a vote on Beverly Hills, remember that you're not just replacing a school with a newer school or you're not starting a new trend to shut down schools. Every time in Cabarrus County, in the 23 years I've lived here, that there's been a need for a school, one's been built. In every long-range plan during that same period of time, no school was ever shut down, its community dissolved, and the students scattered. This situation is unique. Plans have already been made to replace other downtown schools. So what is the future of Beverly Hills? If you vote to close Beverly Hills, your actions will lack logical sense. Why Beverly Hills? Is it in worse shape than Arbrown-McAllister? Does it not have the same political clout as Arbrown or Coltrane Webb? You see, when a school has been in existence for 60 years, how do you make it just vanish without a ripple effect on the community in which it's a part? This is a tough decision to make and I know that, but I just have two thoughts to leave with you. If you feel you have no other option than to close Beverly Hills, I'm so sorry, but I think you have other options, but just so we'll go there, okay? Please don't let that be your final action. This community deserves much more than a weed-infested crumbling building that is at the very gateway of the community. Why not create a task force of community members and stakeholders to think about the ideas for reuse of this property? If you don't have plans for the building or wish to pursue them, you might want to return the property to the Board of the Commissioners so that they can ensure that the building is used for other purposes so that it remains a viable part of the community. We are Beverly Hills community, all these people and all the people that have come to all these meetings. We want to keep our school open because it is indeed the heart of our community. We love our school and we're waiting for and we're watching your vote. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to speak this evening. I know so many of you up there. My purpose is, I don't have a kid at Beverly Hills. I never went to Beverly Hills, but Beverly Hills' story is the same story that I have. Those of you who are still here and living at Beverly Hills Community, Logan and Shankertown are two schools that went through, those schools went through exactly what you're facing. When the schools closed in May 1968, by November, the buildings were pushed down to bricks in less than three months after the school closed. To you on the school board, we say to you, the economic impact on the community, the community impact is why that school was put there in the first place because of what was there. People lived in that community and they needed a school. They paid what the going cost was to have a school built in their community at that time. 55, 60 years later, sure it aged, sure it cost to keep it in that community, but the school was put there because of the community. Now, we know when you move a school, you can't rename Beverly Hills anywhere else in this county. It's named after the community. They can't even get a school built anywhere else in the county and call it Beverly Hills. It won't fit, just like Logan. You can't put another school and name it Logan's in another community but Logan's. So those of you that live in Beverly Hills, I understand your fight and I say to this board, if you closed it down because of the dollars and throwing away the livelihood of the people, which one is more important to you? Dollars are always going to be an issue, but the people who live in that community, they don't go anywhere. The only, the only place they go when the school closes is down. People come to this county and they want to buy a home. If it's a home open in Beverly Hills, they won't buy there because there's not a school there. They're looking for schools when they come to this community, when they come to this county. Where is the nearest school? Well, there's houses open in Beverly Hills. Is there a school there? No. Makes it hard for those people to sell, makes it hard for them to live in that community without that engine that drives them. Now, I say to you on the board, don't be on the wrong side of history. Did y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
I don't think you heard me. I said, "Don't be on the wrong side of his story." His story.
Hi, I'm Kelly Dodds. Closing Beverly Hills will not only have a huge ripple effect on our community, families, and teachers, but most of all, our children. We have been a part of the Beverly Hills family for over 12 years and all four of my children have attended. My last is now in kindergarten and I wanted so much for her to be able to experience Beverly Hills like her siblings. When I say family, I mean these teachers and entire staff have treated my children as their own. We briefly put one of our daughters in the STEM program at Patriots when it first started and we moved her from Patriots Elementary after only four months. Come to find out, she was extremely upset every day and would cry for about 20 minutes after getting to school because of the anxieties of the long bus ride and how overwhelming Patriots was in comparison to Beverly Hills. We put her back at Beverly Hills, back with her family, and she was so much better. She felt safe and secure. When we place our children in a larger seat school or have longer bus times, these kids will not only have new heightened anxieties, but simply become just a number. I would like to propose you don't close the door on Beverly Hills family. I am asking to stand up for what's right, at least for the sake of our children. Thank you.
Ewart.
Ewart.
Almost.
Thank you.
Last one.
Oh, I have two more names here. Maybe they're not here.
I don't know. There was nobody behind me, so maybe I ran them off. Y'all are tired. Everybody's tired. Good evening. My name is Mary Catherine Ewart. I live within the City of Concord and I am a graduate of Cabarrus County Schools. I'm standing here with two questions and one follow-up question because Mr. Harrison took my first question, but I appreciate you, that's a good thing, I appreciate you asking that question. But I have three questions actually to ask to the staff, so I hope you will ask it on my behalf. The first question, and this is follow-up to Mr. Harrison's question in regards to the steel tariffs, is when will the state construction data be updated to reflect the materials cost increase? Because I promise you, there is one, and I'll tell you a while later. My second question is how are you taking into effect the planned growth as projected by the City of Concord, the City of Conapolis, and Cabarrus County? My third question is how are you accounting for the unemployment costs that are, I'm sorry, how are you accounting for the personnel consolidation savings with unemployment costs? Because there will be unemployment costs. Now, why should you listen to me? I'm not a parent of a child at Beverly Hills. I did not go to Beverly Hills. I went to Arbrown. I went to Concord Middle and graduated from Concord High. I am a proud Spiter. My mother is a retired teacher from Cabarrus County Schools. She served 25 years in this, in this system. This was the only system she served in. But my brother is a substitute at Beverly Hills. He is loved there and I feel the love for them. And so I felt it was important for me to ask these questions. Now, how do I come up these questions? Well, two reasons. One, my background is performance improvement. I hold a master's degree in instructional performance technology. So this right here is my world. I love it. I get excited to read data and I'm probably one of the few people that do that. But I'm currently, I'm also managing not one, but two construction projects in old buildings. One building was built in the 30s. The second building was built in the mid 40s. So I appreciate and I understand the costs associated to code upgrade. I appreciate and understand the challenges of an old building, but you have to love an old building and you have to love an old neighborhood. So I challenge you, take those questions and go back and reevaluate your data because my recommendation is to reevaluate the data. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Basileis, we've reached the end of the list.
We had two folks who signed up and have that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Board members, this is the conclusion of the public hearing. I'll take a motion that the public hearing on the proposed closing of Beverly Hills Elementary School be closed to public input.
So move it, Madam Chair.
Second, Speaker.
Okay, Dr. Kirk, and I think Mr. Harrison piped in first. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. We have reached the end of our agenda. Before we go into closed session, I will say that if you all want to just wait a moment, normally when we have an item on the work session, we do vote the prior business meeting, so I do expect this to be on the agenda next Monday. So. I think you're right.
So you're saying the next step here is to make a vote next Monday?
That's what I would anticipate.
Seven days instead of waiting a month?
Yeah.
To let people evaluate what we've just been presented with?
Yes, just because we've seen all this information before, very little has changed.
We got a whole presentation just today.
Right, and most of that information we have seen before.
No, no, it's consolidated. I don't think that, I think.
I didn't want to put it on the July meeting and we really need to have an up or down.
Okay, well, I'd like to see it on the July meeting. That's me, that's one person.
My second.
We're not voting on adding it to the agenda right now. So. What's that? But they're adding something to the agenda. We haven't voted to add it to the agenda, we haven't voted to add it to the agenda tonight. Okay, if you all could either quiet down or go on the hallway if you need to talk. We're trying to hear each other up here. Thank you. Okay, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Rich, do we need to amend tonight's agenda first before we would do, add an item to vote on?
You announce the meeting on the agenda for. You announce to be on the agenda for next week.
In our normal pattern of work session to business meeting.
And so in creating the agenda for next week, you've got a motion, the second on the floor, to change that agenda.
I know. What I'm asking is, we need to have a motion to amend tonight's agenda first.
No, you don't.
Okay. So there's a motion in the second to put this on, Rob, the July?
The July. I don't think voting on it next week's appropriate.
As opposed to the June 11th meeting. So all in favor of putting it on the July agenda?
Instead of.
Say aye.
Can we have the discussion?
Aye, yes.
What are the ramifications of?
I think more people are out of town in July, which is why we wanted to do the public hearing in June. And also if there is a change in direction, that we amend the 10-year plan because that would have to go with it, that the realignment committee needs to know that sooner than later.
Ten questions each. Will they have information by next Monday night or won't have it till July? Hypothetical silly question, but the reality is.
Yeah, if, if Board members.
Are we still in session?
Yes.
We are.
Yes. Get our mics, I'm sorry.
Yes, correct. Hit mics. So the question is, if Board members have a large number of questions, will staff be able to answer the questions this week and provide the data?
I would guess that that's probably going to allow on exactly what the question is, but we would certainly do our best to give you everything we could get in a reasonable time. There may be questions out there that may take longer to answer or research or whatever. It may be a little more difficult. So to say 100% sure, no, but we'd do everything we could to get those answers for you.
First question.
Three.
Keep conversation going. What is, what is the urgency of June 11th?
To not have the vote in July when we have a combined meeting and parents are, families are on vacation.
Is there any impact to the county's schedule or other committee schedules?
I don't think the county is involved at this point.
Realignment committee or any, any other entities or bodies that need this decision to be brought up June 11th?
There is no other body involved.
I mean, it's our decision, but.
Right. Yeah. Because as we know, the city, I know there were suggestions about the City of Concord, but they don't fund anything with public schools in the state of North Carolina. They have no responsibility.
Is it six of one and a half dozen of the other, June 11th versus early July?
Yeah. I think we can go maybe, I'll say, kind of in the middle. Let's put it on the agenda for next week. Let's put it on the agenda for next week. If questions are not answered, and that assumes you have timely feedback, questions by Wednesday night. So not Friday, not Sunday night, but Wednesday night. We need to stay focused on that.
Given the level of involvement from the community, I just don't think that seven days is enough time for us to kind of process what we've been able to hear tonight, and other meetings. I feel more comfortable with that vote being on July.
Well, if you make the vote in July, we'll not be in the country, so I will not be able to vote on it.
Yeah, we need a full board. I think we all have to be here for that one.
Call the question room.
Okay, all in favor of moving the vote, or putting the vote on the July agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And how many do we have? Robin Vince? Carolyn, your thoughts?
I would go July, but you said, Barry, when are you going to be back?
I won't be back until the fif, Monday the 15th, I'll be back in town.
Yeah, and we have the meeting the week before.
Yeah, we also have.
Monday the 16th.
We have a late June meeting also.
Yeah, we have a late.
Yeah, but that's not a regular business meeting. We can make it whatever.
I know, it's, I'd say, it's only on the schedule for that one item, and we had kind of reserved it for appeals, which we could abandon that.
Yes, we could.
I just think, I mean, if we do policies, we have a first read of a policy, we wait a month, and then we vote again, again. This is, we're introducing something, it should have a little more time to, to get more feedback if we need.
Well, we actually vote on the policy the next week. It just has policy required two readings.
Yeah, but it doesn't go into effect until the following month, each other.
Okay, so the motion, or the vote, all in favor, say, on putting on the July agenda, say no.
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 What was the issue?
I guess, three.
July.
Three yeses.
You're voting July. What are you doing?
We're voting for, to finish this motion, on adding the vote to the July agenda.
I will vote to add it to the July agenda.
Yes, so you three voted yes, and I believe down here we have nos?
Nos.
Nos, okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we add it to the last item that we have in June, which is the Wednesday?
Thursday, the 28th.
Thursday, the 28th.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Can everybody be here for the 28th?
I will make it.
Did you have a second?
Well, that gets more.
I didn't get a second. There was a second. Oh, you did.
Okay. So, Mr. Schumaker made the motion for June 28th, and Dr. Kirk seconded.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye to that motion.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so June 28th, and we will make that, I don't know if it'll be a tradition.
Who was?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Huh?
One.
No.
Six, one.
With Mr. Powell dissenting. And then that will be considered, I'm sorry?
That June 28th meeting starts at 5:30.
That's probably okay. 5:30, we're already planning on it anyways, because of the budget. So, and that will be a special called meeting, not a traditional business meeting. So, okay. So, we're all settled on that, so June 28th. I thought I saw a hand going up over there. So now, I will call for motions to convene and close session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee to review personnel recommendations. And Rich, is there anything special tonight?
Yes, you also need to go in pursuant to 143, 318.11A5, to establish or instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for acquisition of real property.
Okay.
So move.
Thank you. Dr. Kirk made the motion, and who seconded? Mr. Harrison seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so seven of them. Thank you.